Check, check. Good morning, everyone. I call this meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. Welcome to today's Planning Commission meeting, January 25th, 2024. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Can we get a verification of legal notice?
Yes, everything has been properly noticed.
Moving on to consent agenda, we have one item.
I noticed in the minutes, it says, there's a list of people who spoke on Item 6C. And the last one, it says Marilyn Hendrick is actually Marilyn Holden Reed. So I'd propose we make that one amendment to the minutes.
Mr. Chair, although I was not at the meeting, I have reviewed the video and feel prepared to vote on the minutes.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as amended?
Yes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, we will move on to public input. And any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Speakers are requested to legibly write your name in the signing sheet at the podium and state your name for the record. And again, that is for any item that is not on today's agenda.
Not sure how this works. Should print here first?
Yeah.
But just so it's clear, Angie, this is for public input for items that we don't have on our agenda. So if your public input is for the later item, then it would be taken up at that time.
Okay, so even if this item is going to be passed forward onto a different meeting, can we?
It's still on the agenda.
Okay, so will it still be heard today then, even if it's going to be passed forward?
We're going to do an election of the chair and the vice chair shortly, and it will be up to the chair. But typically, customarily, a notice public hearing, the chair will ask if there's anyone there for that public hearing that day.
Okay, great. So we'll be able to be, something will be able to be heard then. Perfect, thank you.
Can we take a look in the Zoom room? Seeing no hands in the Zoom room and nobody in chambers, I will close public input and move on to our first item, which is election of chair and vice chair.
Mr. Chair, thank you for your couple of years of service, or year and a half, whatever it might have been. It was well done, and thank you for taking on the additional burden of being chair. But I would like to, for the next round, nominate Commissioner Price as our incoming chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I take it. I will gladly take over. I appreciate it. And then we need to nominate a vice chair?
Correct.
I'd like to nominate Everardo Chavez as vice chair.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Excellent.
That was our election.
We're just going to shuffle real quick, and we'll be right back. Thanks for your patience, everybody. Thank you, thank you for your patience, everyone. We are up and moving. Sam, can you hear me on the mic?
Not yet. Now you're ready.
Thank you. All right. Here we go. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. My name is Christina Price. I will be your chair moving forward on today's meeting. Our first timed item for 9:05 is a public hearing in consideration of administration appeal.
Madam Chair, I will be abstaining from voting from this item. Recusing myself.
Thank you. Just go ahead and sit outside of chambers. Thank you. So this is a public hearing on consideration of administrative appeal 2201 of Lake Shore Associates Incorporated, a lake bed encroachment permit 2022-25. Appellant, Richard and Lana Scheider, located at 11380 North Shore Drive, Lakeport, APN Good morning. Looks like we have Michelle and Scott DeLeon.
Good morning, Commissioner Price. My name is Andre Ross. I'm with the Law, Form, Ewing &amp; Associates on behalf of Scheider Trust. Seated to my right is Dick Scheider, trustee of Scheider Trust.
Good morning.
Good morning. Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources Director. It's been a while since I've been here. Nice to see you all. I'm reminded that, as I'm preparing for this, that I did not present or prepare a PowerPoint presentation. So you'll have to bear with me and use your staff report, because I will be referring to some photographs and some things that are in the staff report. To get started, I think it's important to look at perhaps some, a look into the department's policy or what we try to accomplish here. It's been pointed out that the staff report is a little light on additional history. And so for that, I apologize. I tried to make the staff report relatively brief, recognizing that this project, or now recognizing this project, has a lot more complexity than perhaps we originally planned. When we receive a notice of a violation, or something happening on the lake without, or someone's concerned about, we go and do an inspection. If we find that no encroachment permit for the construction has been obtained, we try to work with the person doing the work to get the project permitted. And of course, it depends on the complexity of the project. If it's a brand-new pier and they had no permits, then that is going to result in a lot different process. There's a lot more environmental work. There's a whole lot more that goes into someone that has begun construction on something with, you know, a new structure. In this particular case, this is an existing pier. The property owner was performing some maintenance work on it and some bolstering of the existing pilings, and they were doing so without a permit. And the neighbor contacted us, let us know that something was happening there, and they were concerned about it. We ultimately made a site inspection and found evidence of new construction. And if you look at your staff report on Attachment 2, there are a couple of photographs of the pier, and you'll see some freshly poured concrete squares around the base of the pilings. There's two of them there. You can see that the concrete was formed, or the structure was formed, the bolstering was formed, and it was poured. We received information from the property owner that those were reinforced with steel, so they're reinforced concrete piers or pads around the base of those pilings. We issued a notice of violation. It is attached to the staff report. In that notice of violation, we tell the applicant, or the property owner, that, you know, whenever practical, we try to handle these with what we've termed an after-the-fact permit. Basically, what they have to do is they have to apply for a permit. They have to submit the information to us. We review it. And upon our review, if we find that this would be something that we would normally issue a permit for, we will issue it after the fact. And again, it depends on the complexity and the scope of the project. This project, in our opinion, was relatively minor, and it qualified for this after-the-fact permit. Perhaps in the future, we'll change the name of that, but everything that was put in the notice of violation and use the words "after the fact," so I'm not going to change that right now. That's what we're calling it. Again, upon our review of the information that has been provided, we make a determination, is this something that we would have permitted, you know, had they applied for a permit prior to the beginning of the construction? And again, in this case, we felt that it was. The property owner submitted an application. I am sorry that I didn't include it in the staff report. I can give you a copy. I can give Mr. Ross a copy. I know that he was interested in that. There's not a whole lot to it. There's, it talks about, you know, when they began construction and gives some, there's some questionnaire. I think the most important thing on this date, on the date of the application, is it was 6/30/22. So our notice of violation was sent June 24th, 2022, and we received their application on 6/30/22. So regardless of whatever's in or not in the application, the point is that they were very responsive to the notice of violation, which we appreciate, because it allowed us to try to move forward. After review of the photographs, review of the work that was done, it was staff's opinion that this after-the-fact permit could be issued, and we planned to issue it. And in accordance with our procedures, we notified all the neighbors that we intended to issue this permit and gave the neighbors the opportunity to appeal that decision, which the neighbor, Mr. Schneider, Scheider, I'm sorry.
Scheider.
Scheider, thank you. Mr. Scheider, I apologize, sir. Mr. Scheider submitted a timely appeal. And so with that, that brings us here. Again, if you have any specific questions regarding our procedure, I'd be happy to try to answer those. And again, I apologize for not having a PowerPoint presentation to show the photos, but I would encourage you to review Attachment 2, that has the photos of the pilings and the concrete that was placed to help bolster those.
Thank you.
Mr. DeLeon, I know we'll be hearing from Mr. Ross and Mr. Scheider, but I'm wondering, in the course of communicating with Lake Shore Associates, was there ever a reason in the course of your conversations that they did initially proceed without permits?
Could you ask that again?
In the course of interacting with Lake Shore Associates, who went ahead and did this unpermitted work, did you ever ask the question why they proceeded without permits in the first place?
I personally did not, and I'm not aware that we asked that question.
Okay.
And perhaps if they're here, they can answer that question.
I believe the two of them are here, yeah.
Can we ask it now?
Yeah. Would you mind stepping forward to the mic?
Please be sure to state your name.
Good morning. Ed Mercier, I am the president of Lake Shore Associates. By the way, it's very nice to witness a smooth transition of power this morning.
Thanks.
Democracy in action. So the question, I believe, was, you know, why did we not ask for a permit? Because we had not done any, since I've been there, we haven't done any work out there that required, that I thought required a permit. Water was out far enough. It was merely reinforcing a couple of pylons that were starting to decay on the beach. It seemed pretty innocuous. When Dick brought it up, we immediately went and got a permit and got it in arrears.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Were there any late fees or anything like that imposed?
The fees that we charged were for a, and I'll share that with you. It's in our fee schedule for structural repair of pilings, and that's what we charged them, and there was no late fee. Again, they were very responsive to the notice of violation. Our approach is to try to work with people to get things done. Again, it depends on the scope of the project. If it's an egregious violation, then we have tools, we have ways to charge. And in fact, if you look at the notice of violation, it talks about a $100 fine, and if they don't comply in a timely fashion, that fine can be imposed per day. Again, we felt that their response was timely. And again, it's the nature of the project.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Director DeLeon, may I ask a question about the penalty fine? Did the applicant pay the $849 application fee referenced in the notice of violation?
They did not. What we do when we send the notice of violation, that $849 fee is the standard fee for a lake bed encroachment for a new structure. When we found that the project was what we considered structural repair, we called it dock repair fee. The fee for that application is $425. So that's the fee that they paid. And again, upon receipt of additional information about what the scope of the project was, it didn't merit a full lake bed encroachment fee.
Mr. Ross, this is not an opportunity for cross-examination. If you would please address any comments to the commission.
Certainly, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
I'm trying to understand Director DeLeon's answer. I apologize.
Thank you. And Commissioner Brown, I believe, has something to say.
Yeah, I'd like to follow. That was a question I had. And so the second question I have in terms of the scope of the work, what would have been, in a fashion where the applicant came to get a permit, how would that proceeded? Would there have been a notice to the neighbors? How would that played out?
Fairly similarly, we would have received the application. We would have gone through a process involving the building department, perhaps, depending on, again, if they were going to require permits for something. I don't know if they would have required it on this particular project. And we would have gone through a process to determine if we could issue a permit. And then before we issued the permit, yes, we would have notified all the neighbors that our intent to issue a permit, and we would have been through this same process.
And the follow-up, and so why I'm asking this question is, so we've had several changes to various laws governing CEQA. And so in a situation where a new permit or a new project is going to come forward, so we're not having an opportunity to review cultural resources impacts, because the work went ahead without any type of review or comments from anybody who potentially is interested, so my concern is that with the permit coming after the fact, you're kind of going to render some of that comment moot, because the work is already done. And so that's where I have a concern with, again, coming back on the backside and then issuing the permit and saying, we've remedied the situation, because there's only a partial remedy in my mind. And so that's what I'm trying to understand, how this process would have unfolded.
And also, just to kind of echo what Commissioner Brown is saying, is with existing pylons, I understand that and like everything, the existing structures versus the environmental impact on something that would be new construction. So is there any, can you elaborate on that a little bit for him or for us?
Well, so new construction receives a significant amount of environmental review. To include cultural resource, biological resources, there are a number of rules surrounding the driving of piles and the actual construction window of when things, and those are all related to environmental issues, and specifically the hitch. In this particular case, you look at the photographs, there was no vegetation removed. It was in an area that was beach. It already had a couple of pilings driven. Had they given us a permit upfront, an application before the work, it likely would not have received a whole lot of environmental review, because there was nothing really being disturbed. So again, I go back to, it depends on the scope of the project. Clearly, if it was a brand-new structure, they had removed tulies or other vegetation or, you know, something of that nature, it would have, there would have been a completely different process. And I suspect, you know, I don't know what would have happened if they had gone in and had removed a whole bunch of vegetation.
Yeah, and to follow up again, and so we're talking about existing pilings. That doesn't always equal the exact same footprint. And so that's the concern. And so the time this original dock was put in, I'm sure the picture that we're looking at here in Attachment 2 is not the same as when this dock was first installed. And so that's the concern, is there's been change, and we have to understand that. And so as we looks at it here today, there's nothing, no vegetation on this shoreline, which is the situation in real time. So those are just the kind of concerns I think about when I'm looking at this. What did we miss? What was the opportunity for the community to comment and raise this issue without it having to come in this fashion? So those are what I'm trying to understand.
Any other discussion before we talk to the appellant or open it up for public comment?
No, I share Eagle's concern, and I think this would be the case if it weren't an existing structure, but it seems like we shouldn't be punishing people for maintaining their docks and piers. I think just this past week, we had a dock floating free near the state park, and that's going to do a lot more environmental damage than, so those are my comments.
Thank you. We will, did you have anything to add before we open it up for public comment?
Certainly, I have submitted a written brief to the Planning Commission with a number of exhibits. I've also submitted, at the onset of the hearing this morning, a 1970s-era photograph of the subject dock, which is the only photograph in this record that shows conditions before the pour. Director DeLeon's photographs show the pour that is the subject matter of this appeal. The reason the photograph that was submitted this morning is important is that the commissioners can see from the photograph that the original configuration of the dock included wooden piers drilled down into the dirt, the beach area, and there were no concrete pads or foundations installed in the structure during the 1970s. Director DeLeon's photographs correctly show the quantity of concrete poured in support of the 80-year-old dock. And the quantity of concrete poured without a permit is not insignificant. I'd ask the commissioners to take notice of Exhibits A through H, A through G of the written brief, and the additional photograph that I've marked Exhibit H. I've cited extensively in my written brief the applicable provisions of the County of Lake Shoreline Ordinance. In addition to the municipal ordinances, this construction project was subject to a host of environmental regulations that protects the lake from construction projects or negligent use of toxic or hazardous materials. And clearly, it cannot be disputed that the accidental dropping of one bag of cement mix into the lake off the end of that dock would have been a clear violation of the Lake County Shoreline Ordinance, subject to local penalties of a criminal nature and a civil nature, as well as potential criminal liability under the state laws. What's different here is that this property owner poured foundations on the beach without inquiring either through private counsel or a licensed contractor or the county of Lake itself. Can I do this without violating the shoreline ordinance? The answer to that question is no, the property owner didn't do that, and that's why we're here today. There are no issues being raised in this hearing about things that the property owner may have done to the structure of the dock, or the top portion of the dock, or the structural elements of the dock. It's not, it's not correct to say that we are critical of the repairs being done. We are critical of the unannounced, undisclosed, unscheduled, and covert pouring of cement on the shoreline of Clear Lake. Neither Director DeLeon nor I can tell you how many buckets of lake water were put into the cement that was poured, nor can either of us tell you how many times the unlicensed contractor who poured those foundations might have dipped his trowel into the lake, because the action was done covertly and without the supervision of a licensed contractor or the county. Now, I'm very grateful that Director DeLeon has brought to the hearing today an application that was apparently submitted by the property owner. That application was requested from the county in September of 2023 to Deputy County Counsel Carlos. He told me the file has been lost or misplaced, and he was unable to supply any of those documents. I'd very much like to have a copy of whatever application was submitted. My briefing was written under the assumption, under the incorrect assumption, that no application was made. The problem when staff loses the enforcement file is staff can't corroborate its proper handling of the matter prior to the hearing, and that's an unfortunate consequence of misplacing a file, and we're all humans. It happens in law offices as well. My point is, is that there was a significant violation of the shoreline ordinance, and that violation had nothing to do with repairing the upper portion of the dock. It had to do with pouring fresh concrete on the shoreline of Clear Lake. That concrete was poured without a permit. It was allowed to cure without a permit. It was probably rinsed off with water that flew into the lake. Cement is one of the hazardous substances that are specifically referenced in the local ordinances that govern this project. The appellant would argue the proper outcome here is to vacate the lake bed encroachment permit and allow the applicant to remove the new concrete, or appeal this to the Board of Supervisors for their adjudication of whether or not the applicant's pour is de minimis or should be allowed under the governing municipal ordinances. Our position, Mr. Scheider's position, is that it should not. There are additional flaws with the pours that don't apparently concern Director DeLeon, having to do with the location of the pour, and there is civil litigation pending about that as well. And it is noted correctly in Director DeLeon's staff report that the dock also interferes with construction setbacks. We respectfully ask Director DeLeon to share with my office as soon as possible copies of the information that was previously not disclosed. I'm grateful that that information has been located. Nevertheless, we would ask that this applicant, who bears the burden of justifying his project, not be granted a lake bed encroachment permit, and if they And if they wish to take this matter up with the Board of Supervisors, they can pay the County of Lake's appeal fee and have the matter decided by the organ that has taken legal action to protect Clear Lake from covert construction problems involving toxic substances.
Okay, thank you so much.
That's it.
We are going to go ahead.
Question? Mr. Ross, are you suggesting that the remedy would be to vacate the application?
Yes.
And then make the Lake Shore Associates simply do everything over again?
Or to demolish the?
May I, Mr. Ross, may I just finish my question?
The original?
May I, may I finish my question?
Okay, may.
Thank you. Director De Leon has implied that had they approached the county first with their application to get a permit, it would have been approved. And if the remedy, in your opinion, is simply to make them tear it out and do it all over again with the expectation that that process will be approved, what is that really accomplishing?
Well, as I said, there's civil litigation pending, and a judge is going to decide whether or not that foundation that was poured without a permit should remain there. Our position in that litigation is that those foundations are a trespass onto the Scheider Trust property.
Okay, and we, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
So requiring the permit applicant to remove their work simplifies the Scheider Trust's litigation significantly. That, those pours don't belong there. That's Mr. Scheider's position in court. A judge will decide that question within the next, with course of the next year. And if the county decides to enforce the shoreline ordinance, as we submit respectfully, it should be enforced, the removal of the offending concrete accomplishes great benefit to the Scheider Trust property owner.
Well, we need to make a decision today, regardless of when the judge may act.
Madam Chair?
Please.
We've had a snafu on the agenda with the Zoom link, and, but, I have a solution. So it is, for those who may be, may not have been able to get on via the Zoom link but clicked on the "in progress" and are watching it as a participant, or no, as an attendee, they are able to get onto the Zoom room by going to try that link. It's not going to work, but it will say, a little bit, about halfway down, it'll say, "I'm not the meeting host," and it has a link for "join meeting as an attendee." If you join as an attendee, it will then ask you for a webinar ID and the passcode, both of which are available on the agenda, and that will bring you into the Zoom room as an attendant.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we open it up for public? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, I don't think that public funds should be spent on doing surveys. Am I incorrect here? I mean, if the issue is really a property line issue, then I don't, I don't think that it's appropriate for our department to be making that call. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate use of public funds. That's just my, that's my comment.
If I may piggyback on that comment, the staff report does make a reference to that this pier dock structure has been involved in neighbor's disputes since the late 1950s. We're not here to, we're not here to adjudicate that either.
And if I could also add, the staff report also describes this structure as non-conforming. We haven't hidden from that, and it doesn't comply with the current ordinance for setbacks. And in fact, it crosses over the property line of the neighbor. However, the ordinance does allow for non-conforming structures, and the ordinance allows for the maintenance and repair of non-conforming structures. And we believe that this is included. The work that was done was, I'm using the word minor, it was minor enough that it did not expand the footprint. It simply provided some additional support and protection to the existing pilings. And that's, that was our, our decision, and, and that was the decision that we used to issue the encroachment permit.
Thank you.
One comment. Director De Leon made his decision based upon one set of photographs taken at the time the citation was issued. Director De Leon didn't have any understanding of the configuration of the dock before the photograph.
Okay, thank you.
And when you make a decision on incomplete information, you sometimes make the wrong decision.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anybody who wishes to speak on this item is welcome to approach the podium. Do we have any hands raised in the Zoom room? You're welcome to, you're welcome to approach the podium, please.
I don't know if there's a section where I participate otherwise.
This is kind of your, your time. You're going to have three minutes, but please state your first and last name for the record.
Sure, it's Edward Mercier, President of Lake Shore Associates, and good morning. And let me just apologize, I think the commission is being, you know, used for this ongoing harassment between neighbors. There was an easement that was put in place in the 50s, and Mr. Scheider's been attempting to find a way to be able to vacate that easement, and so he's going to have that, you know, before a judge at some point. We've only been there for the last 20 years, so I haven't been there the whole time that that's been in dispute. But I apologize for not having the, the permit done early on because if water was out so far, I didn't realize that just reinforcing the footing was important. I appreciate the, the county of coming out and being responsive to helping us remedy that. And again, I apologize for this, this commission being leveraged like this.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in chambers? Ruby, anyone? You're welcome to approach the podium. This is public comment for the current item that we're on.
Well, I was.
And don't, please sign your, or make sure you sign in and state your first and last name.
Well, just from listening to this, I didn't attend here to listen.
Did you state your first and last name, please?
Oh, T.G. Kosky.
Can you, and into the mics so we can all hear you. I'm sorry, there's just a lot of moving parts.
T.G. Kosky.
Thank you, hi.
But just listening to this case, it seems at this point rather punitive to have him take it down to disrupt this, you know, because he didn't follow the rule. I think this case is important because it seems to me in the future there'll be other cases like this because there's a lot of docks on the, on the lake that probably will need some structural change. But to say, let's take it down, seems to be contributing to the possible contamination of the lake, tearing it apart and all the debris and everything else. It seems ridiculous to me to put somebody through that. It's done, it was a mistake, and they're trying to remedy that, but I do think this is a possible, important case for the future because this is going to come up again.
Appreciate your comment, thank you. Anybody else? Ruby, anybody in the Zoom room?
Participant on Zoom, Zach. Please state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Can I make a comment?
I will come back to you. It looks like Zach is still muted. If you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, I actually didn't raise my hand to speak, but.
Thanks for letting us know, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, one more glance around chambers. Looks like no one else is wishing to speak on this item. I will go ahead and close public comment, and you, I will give you a chance to speak. Into the microphone and make sure you state your first and last name.
Yeah, I am Dick Scheider, and I'm the neighbor of the association. And this pier has been in place since 1956. And in 1956, there was an agreement between the owners of my property at the time and the association that they could do repairs to that pier. The issue I have is that pier has been completely rebuilt. It is not the same pier that was in place in 1956, and it continues to be rebuilt. Recently, that pier has all-new decking. Over the years, it's been expanded. Over the years, it's been lengthened. And what it's doing, because of the current setback requirement and repairs that I've made to my pier, meeting the county rules and permitted, has narrowed my access to the lake. I have trouble mounting a sailboat and getting it through the narrow path that's being created because of the changes over the years to this pier, including the replacement of wooden pilings with cement supports and footings, which I objected to in 1977, which put the association in breach of agreement dated 1956. This is 1977, they were in breach of it because that's the start of the expanding of the pier. They called it repairs, the lengthening of the repair, the width has been changed, and recently, the whole top part of the deck has been expanded. The old pier is underneath what's there now. And so my problem, it keeps getting bigger. And to my knowledge, there's been no permits granted for it, even to begin with, or with the current issues other than the footing that's been granted after the fact. And it's causing us a problem. We put in a boat lift. We had to maintain the 10-foot setback. We recently applied for a permit to put in a jet ski lift, and I asked that the lift be put in on the opposite side of my pier. The pilings would be outside the 10-foot setback, but the forks would overhang the 10-foot setback. That was denied. So I put it on the other side, which is going to make that narrow path to the lake even more problematic. So I live by the rules. I live by the rules that the county set, and I'd like those rules to be enforced consistently. How you pour cement footings within the 10-foot setback that's now in place since 2000, I think, Scott, is amazing to me. The rules need to be followed consistently.
Thank you. Okay, we will bring it back to the commission for discussion. And do you have anything to say yet, Commissioner Hess?
A comment on Mr. Scheider's comment. I certainly respect what you say, sir, and I believe you in terms of past provocations and bother, but the only issue before the commission today is the, is this one issue.
I got you.
And we can't look backwards at things, changes that were made 40 years ago or 30 years ago. They're the four corners of the issue that's before us today. And I just wanted to be clear that we heard you. However, it's a much narrower topic that we're charged with dealing with today.
I just gave you some background so you could maybe see my position.
Sure, appreciate that.
And Scott understands, he's been to my property.
Okay, Commissioner Field.
No, I appreciate your comments, I understand it better now. Thank you.
I understand what's in front of us right now. I once, I have to think of, of the situation of Mr. De Leon going out there, seeing what had happened, and going and issuing, or saying that it would go ahead and it would have been fine to go ahead and do the work, issuing the permit thereafter the fact, if that remedies, if you've been out there and have a visual and you feel that that is sufficient. That's kind of where we are at with this. I do appreciate the public's comment on the future of, this is going to be ongoing problems, people wanting to repair their decks, whether, or their piers, whether it's pylons, whether it's cement, fixing the boards. What we should focus on and maybe moving forward is make it easier for contractors or even homeowners to know when you need to contact lake bed management, when you need to pull a permit. If you have a question, instead of going ahead and doing the work, you know, a simple phone call, not a problem. I do appreciate you being very punctual with the notice being issued, and then within a week and a half, you already were out there addressing the issue, did the permit, and this is where we are at. So do I think it's kind of a slap on the hand? Absolutely. But with things being the way that they are, I think demolish, or, you know, demolishing the concrete and mitigating it that way is just clear as mud. So I'm pretty firm on where I stand with this. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. You know, I have a hard time with the way this has been handled. I understand there's, there's a process to remedy, but, but to make mistakes, this allows for additional mistakes to happen. My concern, again, is, is that we have to follow the laws as they're written in that moment. And so for myself, I can't support the applicant. I don't, I don't like the fact that we're rewarding after the fact, the mistake, however minor we want to look at it. I understand the comment of tearing it down is a little too much in my mind as well. And so trying to find a balance is, is, for myself, not an easy place to be right now. But as it stands, I'm not prepared to support the applicant at this moment. Thank you.
I respect my colleagues' comments, of course, and you're our touchstone when it comes to tribal and cultural resource matters. And if the scope of this violation were any larger, I would probably be opposed as well. But given the nature of the pour and the way it was adjudicated, I'm comfortable making a motion at this time.
Okay, Florida Shores.
I move that the planning commission find that the lake bed encroachment permit 2022-2-25, applied for by Lake Shore Associates for work performed on a lake bed structure at 11360 North Drive, does meet the requirements of Chapter 23 shoreline ordinance and deny the appeal 22-01, and direct water resources staff to issue the permit.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries? I cannot find the note. Thank you.
There's appeal language.
Where's it at? It's not on there. It's usually on there. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar appeal period, seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate form and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. Thank you.
All right. Chair? If I may, I'd like to just make that announcement on how to get into the Zoom room prior to each item, in case anybody's just tuning in. So if you.
Go right ahead.
If you put the link up into your Internet window, it will say that, it'll give you some kind of, we're waiting for the host to start the meeting. But you'll see below that is a link that says, "Join meeting as attendee." If you click on that link, it will then take you to a window where you fill in your webinar ID and your passcode, both of which are available on the agenda. That will bring you into the Zoom meeting as an attendee. Thank you.
Thank you. And it has been brought, hold on one second. So in regards to item 6E on the agenda. Oh, yeah, let's get Commissioner Chavez. Thank you. One moment while we get our colleague in here. Thank you for your patience, everybody. Our next item is a public hearing for consideration of proposed major use permit UP 21-27 and mitigated negative declaration IS 21-27 for approval of 21,600.
for approval of 21,600 square feet mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation. Applicant is Sky High Farms Kathy Christ, located at 10788 Sky High Ridge Road, Lower Lake, APN 122-340-02. Good morning, staff.
Good morning. Our principal planner is running to grab the flash drive.
Oh, excellent. Are you going to be, so she has the flash drive, but do you want to discuss about or go over anything while we wait?
Sure. The, good morning, commissioners. My name is Mary Claybon. I'm an assistant planner with the Planning Division. And today we are going to discuss UP 2127 and mitigated negative declaration for initial study IS 2127. And the applicant and consultant are both present in chambers today.
It's probably better to wait for your PowerPoint, but I was like, oh, she, it's probably better just for that. Yeah.
Also have a comment to make. I did visit the site for this project sometime last year in the summer.
Thank you. The agenda today will consist of the permit request, the project scope, site description, project aspects of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions.
Would it be possible to share that presentation on Zoom?
I believe you have to exit out and then go back through Zoom and then share screen. And then full screen. Awesome. We good to go, Sam? All right, excellent. Floor is yours.
Yeah, just press the left arrow button. There you go. Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you, Ruby.
The project proposes a total of 21,600 square feet of mixed light cultivation within 22,000 square feet of cultivation area with an A Type 3B mixed light license and one Type 13 self-distribution transport-only license. The parcel size is approximately 27.16 acres. The site is located approximately 0.9 miles north of Morgan Valley Road, Lower Lake. The zoning designations include rural lands and base zoning is also rural lands within the Lower Lake Planning Area within Supervisural District 1. The project parcel has variable topography with hills and valleys. The proposed cultivation areas have been previously graded and cleared of vegetation from former legacy grow and hay production at the site. The project scope consists of nine 30-by-100-foot greenhouses, so 3,000 square feet greenhouses, four parking spaces, one being ADA compliant, one ADA portable chemical toilet with hand washing stations, a 12-by-70-foot loading area, four 2,500-gallon water tanks, two being comprised of steel or fiberglass dedicated to fire suppression, a 25-foot-by-15-foot composting area, a 100-square-foot chemical and fertilizer storage shed, two locking garbage containers. And the applicant is also proposing interior driveway and roadway improvements. Existing uses at the site include a residence, a cabin, barn, shed, well, septic system, and locking gate. The project analysis includes regulations reviewed for compliance. The Lake County General Plan was reviewed, as well as the Lower Lake Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. General Plan, Lake County General Plan policies were reviewed. There are no conflicting policies within the general plan. And there are no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation within the general plan. The general plan goals and policies reviewed include Chapter 3 Land Use, Chapter 7 Health and Safety, Chapter 8 Noise, and Chapter 11 Water Resources. Project analysis within the Lower Lake Area Plan. The applicant has provided a water availability analysis and drought management plan, and is required to adhere to the California State Water Resources Quality Control Board Cannabis Cultivation Policy. Ooh, that was a mouthful. Requiring runoff to be retained onsite, mitigating offsite downstream drainage impacts. A cultural resources assessment was also provided by the applicant. The Lake County Zoning Ordinance was reviewed, specifically Article 7 Rural Lands and Article 27 Uses Generally Permitted. The SEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to resources, aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, noise, and wildfire. And at this time, I'd like to have the commissioners take a look at the staff report memorandum that was sent to you on the 23rd. This clarifies a clerical error that recognized geo mitigation measures, Geo 1 through Geo 4, Haz 1 through Haz 8, Hydro 1 and Hydro 2 as mitigation measures. However, these are conditions of approval. They are not mitigation measures. So I just wanted to clarify that. Skip to page. So mitigated negative declaration is the proposed SEQA environmental determination for this project. Identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. Public comment period occurred from January 31st, 2022, to March 3rd, 2022. And the mitigations are outlined within the staff report attachments to draft conditions of approval and attachments for draft initial study. Notification of the project was sent to 11 local tribes for AB 52 notification on September 3rd, 2022. Tribal consultation was not requested. I have attached tribal comments within the staff report attachments as well. Points of interest for this project include 4290, 4291 access. This is a mixed light project, so it does have those specific requirements. There is a bridge that is rated appropriately for the project on Sky High Ridge Road. It is a county unmaintained road. The bridge is capable of withstanding 40 tons or 80,000 pounds, and the requirement is 75,000 pounds. So it does meet that requirement. A locking metal gate is installed across the driveway, controlling access to the parcel. Gravel will be applied to the surfaces of a 20-foot-wide access road. And a hammerhead turnaround is also proposed by the applicant. An additional-
Proposed or intended?
Proposed and intended. An additional point of interest is energy use. The applicant submitted material states that an additional 600 amps would need to be addressed to serve the product, project with adequate power. An electrical upgrade would be required from the Building Safety Division when applying for building permits for this project. Within one mile of this proposed project are two pending and two approved projects. And within three miles of this project are nine pending projects and seven approved projects. Recommendations. Environmental recommendations. Adopt mitigated negative declaration initial study IS 2127 for use permit UP 2127 with findings found in the staff report. Major use permit findings or recommendations. Apologize. Approve use permit UP 2127 with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found within the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I'm open for questions and comments.
Thank you. That was a great presentation, Mary. Thank you. Any comments or questions for staff before we open it up to public comment?
I do have a question.
Sure.
That's regarding the additional 600 amps the applicant says would be required to do the project. It does say that PG&E is already connected to the site. How will those additional 600 amps be acquired or created? And what's the timeframe for that?
So PG&E does have extended timeframes, as you know. They can be 18 months. Quite some time. There is a process within the Building Safety Division, and I can't speak to that process because I'm not within that division. However, they would apply for that electrical upgrade through that division, and I am not sure of the timeframes in which that would take place.
Can the overall project go forward without that additional power? Is that something that would be considered an add-on? And I'm happy to ask the applicant that question.
I would defer that question to the applicant based on how they would consider proposing that.
One other question. Were there any green sheets or public comment?
There was no public comment for this, and the green sheet was the staff report memorandum.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have the same concern about the electricity usage. And I, I thought it might be a question for the applicant because in the property management plan, it says that Sky Farms plans to install a solar array at its grow site by August 1st, 2022. So I was just going to ask if that got done.
Is the applicant here, or can someone speak to that, please? Good morning.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Michael Wegner, thank you guys so much for taking the time today to hear this out. So as far as power goes, good question. Obviously, it's way out there. The increase in power is actually not necessitated around PG&E. It is based around the idea of installing a solar system. But installing a solar system prior to actually getting the permit is kind of, you know, carriage in front of the horse or in reverse, right? So before they spend that kind of money and go through all of that, they want to make sure they get their permit first. So with that, the PG&E hookup would just be in addition or as like as a backup to it if and when PG&E gets to it. Because at this particular point, you're looking at probably about a year and a half or maybe more with PG&E. So and again, you're not going to put in that application until you've actually been approved for your project. Otherwise, it's all kind of pointless. If that answers your question, I'll sit down.
To answer your question, Commissioner?
Answers enough.
For now. Okay. Thank you. We will open public comment at this time. Anybody in chambers wishing to speak on this item is welcome to approach the podium. And please direct everything towards the commission. Good morning.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Thank you again for having me up here. Couple of quick points. I did want to touch on a question around, how would workers or staff identify archaeological items or points of interest? And again, I think that's a good point. It's something that I think as we move forward should be a part of the conversation because it hasn't always been before. So I think it's a good thing to bring up. You know, sensitivity training for staff or for anybody who's working on site seems like a no-brainer. And we're lucky enough to have Robert sitting right here who provides sensitivity training. So I have his card, and I'm hoping to, you know, rope him in to give us a hand with it. And you know, possibly it's something we should think about in the future. Maybe other people should participate in such a thing. But we'd like to volunteer to do that. With that, the applicant is a longtime resident. She's lived her whole life, Kathy Christ. And we have a lot of out-of-town interests up here in our beautiful county. And the reality is, we all know, they kind of come and go. Kathy's lived here her whole life, and she's not going anywhere. So I think this really helps to solidify the local industry, as it were. And it's not like a bunch of carpet bagging, which maybe is not the right word to say. But I think it's kind of realistic. So with that, if you guys did have any questions or anything that you felt was concerning, I'd love to answer it. If I, if I have an answer, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
I do have just a comment, and this was a question I directed to staff. And so in Cultural 2 mitigation measure, the initial study, it says all employees shall be trained in recognizing potential significant artifacts that may be discovered during ground disturbance. But I've yet to see an actual plan of what that looks like, what type of training is involved. I'm glad a connection was made. Because again, what happens is if artifacts or anything culturally sensitive is found, if it's moved, it can impact the scientific value, the tribal cultural resource value. If somebody sees it and picks it up and takes it. And so then archaeologists might come in and say, oh, well, things have been moved around. There's no value in this site anymore. And so a big part of what makes those sites important is the scientific and tribal cultural resource aspect. And so why it's critical, because this is standard mitigation language. And I've yet to see any actual plan by any applicant on how they're going to meet that condition. And so I appreciate what you had stated, and I'm open to any additional information you can provide or at what point do you think that's important. But I'm glad it's on your radar.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown. And I think those are points well made and points well taken. You know, the significance of a site is based on the totality or the structure of it. So as soon as you move or run something over, you lose your ability to have true data pulled from it, right? And so as far as how do we do that? Well, knowing that we don't know is the first thing. And so- And so going to Robert or somebody similar in capacity who can teach staff, how do you deal with this? What are you looking at? What do you, you know, what does a particular shaped rock mean, right? Is it round and it's flat, or is it concaved? All these things are important, but we don't assume that we have that capacity or that knowledge level, which is why we would look for an expert such as Robert to help teach us what and how to identify such things. And it is absolutely important, I think, not to just us as a particular project, but all of us as a group. Lake County is very special in as far as having archaeological sites and cultural sites that date back well past 10,000 years, right? I mean, it's astronomical. It's phenomenal. So again, we wouldn't assume that we do know. We would look to an expert like Robert or somebody in his similar capacity to do that training. And I think moving forward, maybe we as a group should put together the structure in which people can go through to make sure that they've been properly trained moving forward. It would be my suggestion, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess kind of going off of the same topic there, I do know that the property management plan states that it initially was intended to do 24,500 of outdoor and then converted to mixed light. So with that mixed lighting, with the structures for mixed light, the greenhouses, would any grading be, would there be any grading for that?
Another good question. The grading is going to be determined ultimately by the amount of slope that's already existing there. Since you were out there, I'm sure you recall it's relatively flat as it is. So to be, if a grading permit is necessary, it will be pulled. But ultimately, we have to have the layout of it to begin to know how far or if there is grading that is to be done. From basic measurements, not being an engineer myself, it doesn't look to me like there would be any grading if, if anything at all. You might be basically just flattening out because it's the field, right? It kind of has mounds and slopes. But we're not talking about moving any kind of excessive amount of dirt or cutting into hillsides or even digging down into the ground. None of that is in the plan. And then obviously, when we do get to that point of pulling those building permits, all of that will still go through the building department. All of it will be scrutinized by the building department and following the county codes as we move forward.
Yeah, and basically, when that does happen, the connection that you guys made today with Mr. Gary can facilitate that process as well. When construction phase does begin, I mean, you have the contact of who do contact, and they would set you up with a monitor. And when any excavation or any, you know, some kind of foundation is going to have to, you know, go for those houses. So I think that that is a way to mitigate any potential issues that can, you know, come up with when construction phase does begin.
Yes, sir. And just for, I guess, absolute clarity as far as actually doing any kind of foundational or digging, the proposal is a pier system. So we're not going to be doing a concrete, you know, we're not digging up the whole field to drop in concrete, right? This is basically just drainage rock sitting on top of the existing ground. The only concrete that would be dropped or is proposed is just piers, you know, individually and separately. So again, this is not a giant excavation. This is holes for your posts to anchor them to the ground. Other than that, there's no concrete. There's no, you know, major excavation of any kind. But duly noted, sir. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Field?
Looking at the property management plan, the summary states, quote, "Sky High Farms will be a pesticide-free farm." But then it goes on for a page or so about best management practices and how to handle pesticides. So I was kind of wondering, which is it?
Well, I think the idea there, ma'am, is their plan is always pesticide-free, right? They're going to use beneficial insects. They're going to start off with clean stocks, so on and so forth. If then, it becomes a disaster scenario where they have, you know, being in agriculture, I'm sure you realize like we start off with what our plan is, and then sometimes things go awry. So this is like a Plan B. If pesticides were to be used, this is how it would be done. But the general plan is to build a beneficial ecosystem where everything's ticking along, and it really comes down to doing your homework to start with, you know, testing for pathogens, testing for bugs long before they ever wind up on site. But even with all that work, if something goes awry, if then, that's, and so that's why it's included there, Ma.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarity. And then it's just kind of a pet peeve of me, the word organic, as you probably know, is a regulated term, and it's used freely throughout this document. So I'm wondering if by the word organic, natural is meant or Amory-approved?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sure you and CCOF would both have that, a similar question. The term organic is more of just a methodology, and so natural would be a better way to term it. It's not as a distinct definition. And because of your expertise, you are the one person who's like, well, let's see. But again, it is absolutely clear, and you're correct, ma'am. It is not as strictly organic site as in to be certified by CCOF, although that is certainly possible.
Sure.
Or any other certifier. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good questions. Okay.
Just a point to make. You've been very clear in your responses, but typically, an applicant comes in knowing whether there is going to be grading required or not, and also how much earth might in fact be moved. And if it's below a certain amount, no permit is required. However, it's not a deal breaker for me, and I know that there's more to the process with the building department and public works, of course. But some idea would have been helpful.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown. So the plan is there is no grading, okay? But if they went over 50 yards of moving anything, then they would absolutely have to get a grading permit. So that's maybe where you see what seems like more of a gray area, and everything else is pretty stringent. When we get to actual construction, just like any other construction project, it's like, oh, it's going to take a day and be 15 2x4s, you know? Three days later, and 45 2x4s later, you're going, oh, man, that's not exactly how I had it planned out. So with that, I did try to keep it open enough to take into account possible things that we don't know that could arise or issues that we might have. But to specifically answer your question, the specific answer is no, we do not plan on doing technical grading because the permit itself allows us up to, I believe, the 50 yards. So.
Thank you for your clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
We will go ahead and open this up for public comment. And anybody wishing to speak on this item is welcome to approach the podium. Please be sure to state your first and last name, and you will have three minutes.
Yeah, hello. My name is Robert Gary.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm the tribal historic preservation officer for Habemotol, Pomov Upper Lake, and then also the tribal historic preservation officer designated for Coination. And so I just wanted to clarify a little bit. I think when we're talking about, you know, some of the cultural resource issues, I think that we, that are, you know, questioned in here as part of for cultural sensitivity training. You know, I talked to the applicant. I know Kathy for a very long time, very good person, you know, with what she's doing. I believe that, you know, she really has, you know, the best intent, I think, for, you know, what was going to happen. But with that said, just for clarification, I wanted to make sure that, you know, people know that, you know, just because what I do doesn't mean that I can go into somebody else's territory or traditional Aboriginal territory and train because the practices and the values and the traditions are different. And so I could be used as a resource, and I've made myself as a resource, I think, both here to the planning commission and then even to the planners, any way I can help. But I did answer back to this and stated that, you know, it wasn't within our territory, but Middletown would be the ranch area to go. So as far as for needing cultural sensitivity training, it would be somebody from that tribe that would need to come out and do that. So I just wanted to make that clear, you know, is that, you know, we can't just find somebody and check the box and kind of get it done. All of us are all individual nations with different cultures, different traditions, different beliefs. And so somebody from within that territory would definitely be the person to contact. But yeah, definitely give me a call and let me know, and I can give you some numbers of who I think out there could, you know, be able to come in and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Sure. You're welcome to approach the podium. Just be sure to state your first and last name.
Teresa Harpworth.
Good morning, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to address, I am a resident of Morgan Valley area, and we have, over the past few years, been inundated with irresponsible grows. It's been a problem. It is kind of countywide. I want to state that this project, and thank you for doing your due diligence, is a very responsible project. We're very happy to see this process go through. There's not only, you know, the impact to heritage, but to the environment and just to the traffic on our road. So the process is very much appreciated. I've known Kathy forever. To piggyback on what Michael has said, she is a member of our community and a very, very responsible member of the community. So it's nice to see the process and the trust that goes out to some of these people that are trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone in the Zoom room? Ruby? If you are in the Zoom room and you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Participant Erin McCarrick, please state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Erin McCarrick.
Good morning, Erin.
City of Clearlake. I have a cannabis distribution company in Clearlake, and I just want to support this project. And Kathy, as everyone has said, absolute upstanding member, very patient, will do things on the up and up, will also be successful. She just is such an integral part of the industry already and will undoubtedly make a very good product. And so when we look at building the cannabis industry, when we look at creating successful businesses in general, adding to our tax base, adding to our employment, all that stuff, it is, I have no doubt that she will be one of those people. So 100% support this project. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Congratulations to Chair Price and Vice Chair Eduardo Chavez. And yeah, she's just, it's a good project all around, has been very patient with the county and the community development project. And oh, that was the other thing. It'll be really great to have some mixed light cannabis flower in our community. As somebody who promotes Lake County flower, people are looking for that. So again, that element will also help to add to a successful business. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the Zoom room wishing to speak? Please raise your hand. Do you see anybody, Ruby? Richard Durham, we are seeing your hand trying to be raised. We're not sure if you are waving or if you're trying to let us know that you'd like to speak. If you could possibly maybe put it in chat or try again? We'll try to unmute you on our end.
Think I got it there?
Excellent. We can hear you. Good morning. Just state your first and last name for me, please.
My name is Richard Durham. I'm a cannabis cultivator, realtor, and consultant. I've known Kathy for a very long time. I know that in the writing of the ordinance over the years, we were here to protect the county and the long-term residents. And she would probably be the poster child or the spirit behind the ordinance. So I throw 100% of my effort behind her for all these years that I've been attending these meetings. She was the people we were trying to protect. So I hope that we pass this, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in Zoom wishing to speak? No? I'm not seeing any more hands in the Zoom room. One more glance around chambers. Okay. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion. Any comments or questions?
No, no further comments.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 21-27 applied for by Sky High Farms Kathy Crist for the property located at 10788 Sky High Ridge Road, Lower Lake, APN 122-340-02, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated January 25, 2024.
I would second that. I think we also need to make a mitigated negative declaration. So I don't know about if the order is important.
Oh, I had scrolled down too far. Does it, counts it as matter if we took one before the other?
Technically, the, you need to have approved the sequel, well.
In order?
Yeah.
Fine. I apologize for scrolling too fast. I move that the planning commission find that potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration IS 21-27 submitted by Sky High Farms Kathy Crist for the property located at 10788 Sky High Ridge Road, Lower Lake, APN 122-340-02, will not have a significant impact on the environment and the planning, and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 21-27 with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 25, 2024.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I move again that the planning commission find that the major use permit UP 21-27 applied for by Sky High Farms Kathy Crist for the property located at 10788 Sky High Ridge Road, Lower Lake, APN 122-340-02, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated January 25, 2024.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. I'm showing a time now of 10:27. We will take a 10-minute break and come back for our next item at 10:37. Thanks. If we could start making our way back to our seats, I'll give everybody a little bit of time to settle down. Little bit of time? Yeah. All right. Thank you for your patience, and I hope you enjoyed your break. We will be taking up our next item, public hearing in consideration of a proposed one year extension, UPX 23-02 to major use permit UP 21-18. Applicant is Sunrise Shore Mutual Water Company, Breely Engineering. Location is 6030 Sunrise Court and 6200 Sunrise Drive, Lower Lake, APNs 043-032-04 and 043-310-05. Good morning, staff.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Max Stockton. I'm an assistant planner.
Good morning.
Consideration of a one-year extension for the major use permit UP 2118 for the extension of improvements to the water production facility located on the two separate parcels. The improvements are intended to ensure the water system complies with current state drinking water regulations and enhance local fire protection to ensure the system of operations are economically viable. The original use permit was approved in November 2018, 2021. However, no construction has begun on the project, and this was due to funding. The original use permit had a two-year active period that would expire on November 18, 2023, and the applicants proceeded to- and the applicants proceeded to apply for an extension that we are here for today. The applicant has extended, indicated that the one-year extension is necessary and has applied for the extension and apply, intends to begin building permits mid this year, 2024, to continue and begin this project. A mitigated negative declaration was filed with the original application, initial study 2119. That was also approved with the project in 2021. The approved project description, site plans, as well as existing photographs were included in your attachments, attachment one. The proposed extension does not include any modification or improvements that were not included with the original project. Staff has noticed that there was a typo in the conditions, and staff would like to amend the conditions of approval as the expiration date will need to be changed from January 25, 2026 to January 25, 2025 pending the commission's approval. Elements of improvement that were approved with the use permit 2118 include the following: new 10-by-14 filtration building, new aeration tank on concrete slab, abandoning wells number one and two under floor and filling in that vault, those vaults, I apologize, new pipelines for the water system, removal of two 15,000-gallon redwood tanks and their concrete pads, two new 45,000-gallon water tanks on concrete slabs, and new concrete retaining wall. Again, the proposed extension does not include any modifications to any of these components that were previously approved. Staff would like to recommend that the planning commission approve this one-year extension, UPX 2302, for major use permit UP 2118, and mitigated negative declaration IS 2119 with the findings found in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your presentation. Any questions or comments from the commission? Seems pretty straightforward. Okay.
I just have a, just a quick question. How do the wells, how do they become vacated? What are they filled with?
That is a great question. I did recommend that you could defer that to the applicant, but in conversing with the applicant prior to hearing, it is their understanding that it's going to be backfilled with some sort of gravel most likely, and then possibly tapped off with concrete. But honestly, I don't have an exact answer for you at this time.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, just some kind of gravel and yeah, just cap it off.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we will officially open it up for public comment. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, now would be your time to approach the podium. Good morning. Please state your first and last name.
Thank you. My name is Bob Bisson, B-I-S-S-O-N. I am the president of Sunrise Shore Mutual Water Company. The role is a voluntary role. It's not a professional role. Nonetheless, we do our best when the production of domestic water to behave professionally as we can, and so that's why I'm here this morning. Our, our original permit that was approved by your board or past members was unable to be used during its initial two-year existence simply due to the funding process through the State of California Department of Water Resources. Turned out to be a much slower process than we had anticipated and they had. And so as a result, we were not able to pull a building permit or permits under the use permit in its original two-year process. And so we've asked for the extension so that we can continue moving forward. And I'm happy to be able to report to you that in December of this last year, just last month, we were successful in actually signing and engaging the funding agreement with the State of California for just over $2 million, 100% grant-financed project. In order to do that, though, we still need to have the major use permit in place. So we do expect in the second half of this calendar year to pull the first of what I assume is possibly a half a dozen permits for the various components of the project. So funding is in place, and I fully anticipate that our efforts and yours will come to fruition here in this calendar year. I remain available for comments or questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Justin Witt from Belgium Race. Just wanted to fill in a little bit on the purpose of the project. So it's a public water system regulated by the State Division of Drinking Water, considered a disadvantaged community. So it does qualify for entirely grant funding to improve the water system that exists there now. It supports 45, sorry, 42 connections, roughly 85 people, seasonally dependent. So it is a replacement of a treatment system that exists and a replacement of two failing water tanks to provide service for domestic as well as increased fire storage. So that's just sort of the background on why we're here.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, Robert Gary, tribal historic preservation officer designated for Coination. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak about this. So this came across and I looked at it on Sequinet and kind of took a look at it and started finding some things out about this. The tribe and the company, I think, are in agreement of like as far as we're having tribal monitors on site, which is, which is great. But one of the things I think I wanted to discuss here really is the process. I think for categorical exemptions, I think that happened with the planning department here as well, is just really being able to understand that there are exceptions to those catexes, right? And it is in chapter, I believe it's 34. So one of the criteria is if the project is located in a particularly high-sensitive area may not be exempt from SEQA. This area, and after looking at the actual cultural, cultural resource study, which was actually done, I think it was 2016, by Oranger. And mind, I keep in mind, this is two years after AB 52 was passed. And so, you know, there's a lot of new things being learned at the time. But there has been, there are documents and documentation on Pomo tribal lands that are within that territory. And with those impacts that are going to be happening to those tribal landscapes, they're not in that survey. And so as the survey looks at it, it looks at it as it's less than significant because now we're not talking about tribal cultural artifacts or burials or burial-associated items. We're talking about ceremonial, traditional areas, or even like old villages and campsites. And so the documentation is there. It's not stated in, in this report. It's an inadequate report. And so that's, you know, something that I think that's really important to know that, you know, we should, before we check it off as a catex, and all tribes should be notified about it being a catex so we can also do our due diligence in making sure that we bring all of that information to the table. So like I said, under those criteria, it also falls under cumulative impacts for a project of the same kind. So I'm imagining, because it's a water company, that there's going to be ongoing, you know, things that are going to happen out there, maintenance. What else is there? Under unusual, unusual circumstances, there're going, there's, you know, going to be, you know, emergency situations where things might happen to those sensitive areas and substantial adverse effects, I think, to those cultural landscapes as well. You know, so just keeping that in mind, making sure that, you know, hopefully that we can kind of get into an agreement or an understanding that, you know, tribes should be notified, even catex or not, about these projects that are given that, or even an MND before it gets into the MND, making sure that, you know, all of that information, I think, is given to the commission here. From what I see, I hear, you know, there's new pipelines. I hear, you know, there's a retaining wall. I hear that there's, you know, road, I'm sorry, road, road permits, our grading permits, I think, for the access driveway, I think that's into there. So there's a lot of ground disturbance here, I think, that really has to be taken into account. So I'm glad that there's definitely, like I said, an agreement, I think, between the applicant and the tribe. But one of the things I think to keep in mind is that there's, there also are a couple of things that are missing. In the mitigation measures, there's cultural resource mitigation measures, and they're just basically placed down into tribal cultural mitigation. That's you're going to do the same. They're two different categories. They should be mitigated differently. There should be protocols in tribal cultural resources that literally come from the tribe. So, so I think, like I said, you know, one of the things that are important that I would like to request is to make sure that, you know, anything that's found, because we know there is an agreement for having monitors out there for ground disturbance, that if anything that is found, that there's a place to re-bury anything that's found out there. And that information gets submitted both to the Native American Heritage Commission and then also the Chris Center for the state. So, you know, anything that happens in the future, we know where that location is. We know, you know, whether the sensitive area is and, you know, kind of all that. But, you know, I just wanted to, and I don't know if I could because I know, but I actually made maps to show the documentate, the people who documented these Pomo lands areas and where they fall within this project area. So like I said, any projects that happen within that grading or anything, it's going to impact this tribal cultural landscape, which makes it exempt from SEQA. Or, yeah, it makes it, the categorical exemption doesn't apply to this. So with that said, that's just kind of where I'm at. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can kind of get a little bit more wordage or verbiage, I think, on that mitigation measure and making sure that that happens, you know, that we will be providing tribal, you know, and I think it says that, that we'll be tried, we'll be providing training also, that we, you know, we have an established or to negotiate a place for reburial, you know, for items that are found, and that that is submitted to all the proper agencies. So.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
I'd like to just make a couple clarifications in response to those comments. Looking at the initial study that was prepared in 2001 and approved, the AB 52 notification was sent out on May 5, 2021, and the cultural resources study by Oranger and Associates is dated July 28, 2018. And it looks like consultation was completed with the affiliated tribe, and there is a monitoring agreement. Just wanted to point that out for clarification.
Okay. Thank you.
Additionally, if I could add a little bit of context, our department highly values tribal input. We would never want to proceed with a project with neglect of getting that input. And so that is why actually our conversations with Mr. Gary have been very helpful as we examine our internal processes. So for at least the last year, even if we, if we're going into it thinking it's catexed, we still send tribal notification through the request for review process because it is, it is that notice to them that they can then respond to us to say, no, we have reason to think that this does not qualify for a categorical exemption. And then we go move on from there. So we do handle that during the project analysis process.
Thank you. Sure.
Was there a new request for review sent out regarding this extension?
According to the staff report, let's see, the proposed use permit extension application was routed to agency comment, for agency comments, as well as all area tribes. Yes.
Okay. We still have public comment open. Do, is there anybody in the Zoom room with their hands raised at all? Okay. No one else in chambers wishing to speak? I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
So I have several concerns. And again, this, this goes back to the process, the information, staff's ability to look through the information, properly identify an initial study where information belongs. And Mr. Gary is correct, tribal cultural resources is a section that should be specific to what the tribes' concerns are, what they see here. And, and to me, the, the part of working through all of this is, is again, hit and miss. And, and for myself, it has to be improved. There's, there's no way around it. And how we move to do that is critical. One of the issues I've, I've constantly had is coming from tribal governance, coming as a previous tribal historic preservation officer, I've reviewed hundreds and hundreds of cultural resource documents. That doesn't mean they're all stuck here in my mind that I can pull them out, you know? And these are the typical things that happen and have continued to happen. Mr. Gary stating that the information needs to be submitted. We had that discussion last time about the archaeologists, the consultants, making sure the information gets documented at the Chris Center, the Heritage Commission, which hasn't been a standard practice for those consultants, the archaeological consultants, not all of them. And so myself not having the ability to review cultural resource documents or any redacted document which removes significant information which is protected from the public is troublesome to me. And we've had this discussion. I've mentioned this. I've had county council clarify kind of what, how we, how we view that as the county. But this is my nightmare. This is what, this is what gets missed. And so how we remedy that is, is critical. And how we go about doing that, it needs to be well thought out because as we move forward, there are a lot of things happening. And I'm glad the tribe and the applicant is in conversation. So hopefully that'll help some of this process. But in terms of our due diligence and the review, there were things missed. And so I know you didn't start out reviewing this project. It was, it was kicked down to you. Whatever started the conversations, how did that all get passed? Maybe some of that was discussed in the beginning. Did it make it down to you to consider? So my concern again is just the, the initial study, I feel, doesn't address tribal cultural resources. It doesn't address Section 5 of Cultural Resources because clearly there's information there that is not, not being considered. And so that's kind of my concern. And how we choose to handle this is going to be, you know, important in my mind. And I will leave it at that and I'm jumping again when I have some additional comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Director Turner?
In, in terms of addressing some of the commissioners' concerns, would there be a possibility to have tribal representatives and planning staff meet to discuss, including some of that information upfront, to make sure that it does trickle down to the reporting staff as well as to the commissioners? Would that be a use?
As far as our normal process, that is the purpose of sending out the request for review to tribes, or if we are doing an initial study following the AB 52 process for consultation. It is because, so we won't miss that. But we would welcome dialogue on how to, how to beef up our tribal cultural section of the initial study. Yeah, that'd be great.
Sounds like that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
One thing I've noticed, as Mr. Gary noted in the prior agenda item, tribes are notified, but they don't always respond. And I see that there's a loss there for the entire community. Are we putting too much of that burden on individual tribes? So I think a discussion needs to be had about this. And what comes to my mind is just a suggestion that maybe all the tribes around the lake want to get together and hire somebody to represent all of them in some capacity. So anyway, yeah, that discussion needs to happen. Regarding this particular project, we're talking about an extension. So I don't think that this should, I mean, we have a choice here. We can either approve it or we can kick it down the road. I think that ball needs to be rolling, but so does this one. So those are my comments.
Commissioners, if I may clarify, for today, you have, you do have two options. However, well, you could always continue if you do have questions. However, the, what you're being asked to determine here today is whether or not you will continue a permit already approved. So you are not evaluating the SEQA analysis and you are not evaluating the permit. So your options here are to approve a continuance or to deny it. And if you deny it, then your, then the permit will expire.
Thank you. I think we can bring up what we were discussing as far as cultural training and all of that, maybe at, at the end of the meeting. And we can discuss maybe getting some type of procedures set out for moving forward because.
That's actually something that we would talk about offline.
Okay.
Yeah, I consider it. Yeah. I, I consider it, uh, it would be very helpful, just as we've had conversations with Mr. Gary in the past. Ongoing touch and base with the tribes regarding our ongoing procedures is great. Yeah, we welcome that.
And Madam Chair, if during meetings you do, your commission does in fact find an issue that, that you would like to have agendized, we can certainly do that. What we could not do is add it to that day's agenda.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Please.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and I do believe I have to reopen public comment because it has been closed for this item. So I will officially open public comment.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Robert Gary, uh, tribal historic preservation officer, designate. You know, we're not here to like, kind of pull this back because like I said, there have been communication, I think, you know, with the tribe. I think one of the things for me specifically is just making sure that we have a better process to make sure that you all have this. You know, since Maria has been here, it's been a night and day change and I, I'm, I'm thankful for that. And so, you know, this is definitely, um, some of the things that I've, you know, went through prior to her being here. And it has improved. So thank you very much, you know, for everything that you've brought to, I think, to the county. With that said, also, when this initially started, this was prior, prior to me actually coming back to Lake County. And so when it did come back across my desk and I saw these, and I read through it and I looked at it, that was definitely something, like I said, you know, that we had discussed and some of the things that I thought it was missing. You know, like I said, there was no, there was nothing to address potential impacts or finds, discoveries and how those were going to be dealt with in this mitigation measure. And as usual, the mitigation measure goes from how they're going to deal with cultural is just basically put down in tribal cultural as well. And they're two different, they're two different categories. And so I think those are the kind of things, it's not so much, I think, with what the, the applicant is doing, but with how we're going to do this, I think, going forward, making sure that you all have, you know, all the pertinent information. But I think, like I said, you know, um, you know, we, the, the tribe has worked really well, I think, with the applicant. We just want to make sure, you know, like I said, there's a couple of things that I would like to add, making sure that if fines are, you know, fines have a protocol and what it's, what's going to happen with those fines and where they're going to be submitted. Those are the only things that I, I see that needed to be added to this. But as far as the process, I think that's what I would like to try to improve, that you all have that pertinent information. And whatever we got to do to develop that, I'm, I'm all yours.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you. Sure. Public comment's open.
Sorry. I know we're going backwards here, but, uh, I just wanted to thank Mr. Gary for that and urge you to consider approving the extension. I'm sure you all are aware of the public infrastructure in Lake County. I'm a resident here as well. Anything we can do to improve it for our citizens, I think is incredibly important. That said, I also, and the applicant Sunrise Shore also believe in the preservation of tribal historic resources. This is not the first project I've worked on that came in sort of right at the beginning of AB 52 and the things didn't work quite right. We were all, you know, wearing our training wheels. I have worked with Mr. Gary and Mr. Beltran, uh, on another project, uh, both in Coination's tribal areas. Uh, I believe we resolved that successfully in post-CEQA consultation. Uh, we did enter into agreements, uh, for treatment plans as well as monitoring and training. Uh, that would be the, the same case here. Uh, I have been in contact with, uh, Mr. Beltran in the past and he'd requested monitoring. I understand under Mr. Gary, those requirements have evolved some. Uh, we have no issue accommodating those. So anyway, just want to encourage you to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public before I close it? Any hands in the Zoom room, Ruby?
Yeah.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion or, um, a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the planning commission approve a one-year extension UPX 23-01 for major use permit UP 21-18 for Sunrise Mutual Water Company and Brilia and Raiske Engineering on properties located at 6030 Sunrise Court and 6200 Sunrise Drive Lower Lake APNs 043-302-04 and 043-310-05 with the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated January 25th, 2024.
And as amended.
As amended.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. All right. Moving right along. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for consideration of major use permit UP 22-07 and mitigated negative declaration IS 22-09 for approval of 348,480 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation and 39,936 square feet mixed light cannabis cultivation areas. Applicant is Desel Ranch and Simon Wetzel Junction, oh, sorry. Located at 500, 700, and 770 California State Highway 53 and 550 and 660 Junction Plaza, Clear Lake. APNs 101-055-2829, 33, 37, and 38. Good morning, Ms. Mary.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Claybon, Assistant Planner with the Planning Division. Today, we're going to be discussing UP 22-07 and IS 22-09, Desel Ranch. Applicant Simon Wetzel. The applicant and consultant are both present in chambers today. The agenda today will be the permit request, project scope, site description, project analysis, points of interest, cumulative impacts, and recommendations and conditions. The permit request, the project consists of a, project proposal consists of a total of eight acres of outdoor canopy and 39,936 square feet of mixed light canopy with an A-type 13 self-distribution transport-only license. The total acreage of the five parcels combined is approximately 431.5 acres. Uh, this is the project property. It is located approximately one mile from the, um, Highway 53 and Highway 20 interchange, also known as the Y. The zoning designation for this site includes general plans, rural lands, and full zoning is Rural Lands Waterway and Scenic Combining District. It is within the Shoreline Communities Planning Area in Supervisory District 2. The site, um, as I mentioned, is, um, in close proximity to Highway 53 and Highway 20 interchange. This is an area that has, uh, variable topography with a series of ridge lines and valleys. The project scope consists of eight acres of outdoor canopy proposed and 39,936 square feet of mixed light canopy within 10 3,000-square-foot greenhouses, a 6,000-square-foot metal building for a processing facility, and three 120-square-feet stormproof sheds for hazardous material storage, office and security office uses. It also proposes 12 5,000-gallon water storage tanks for irrigation, a 5,000-gallon metal watch, water storage tank for fire suppression, a 25,000-gallon metal water storage tank for fire suppression, an employee parking area with eight spaces and one ADA compliant space. Existing uses at the site include interior access roads, an existing gate, and two groundwater wells. The regulations reviewed for compliance included the Lake County General Plan, the Shoreline Communities Area Plan, the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and California State Regulations. The Lake County General Plan was reviewed. No conflicting policies within the general plan, no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis within the general plan. The specific policies reviewed within that plan include Chapter 3 land use, Chapter 7 health and safety, Chapter 8 noise, and Chapter 11 water resources. Project analysis also included review of the Shoreline Communities Area Plan. There are no mapped areas of farmland of local importance or farmland of statewide importance at the project site. The proposed project is not located within the Farmland Protection Zone. The applicant has provided engineered drainage and erosion control plans, a water availability analysis, a drought management plan, and is required to adhere to the State Water Resources Control Board Cannabis Cultivation Policy, requiring runoff to be retained on-site, mitigating impacts. Project analysis for the Lake County Zoning Ordinance review was within Article 7 Rural Lands and Article 27 Uses Generally Permitted. The CEQA initial study found that the project could cause potential impacts to resources and those include aesthetics, agriculture and forestry resources, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise and wildfire. A mitigated negative declaration is the proposed CEQA environmental determination for this project. All identified impacts can be reduced to less than significant with mitigation. The public comment period occurred from August 24th, 2023 to September 23rd, 2023. Notification of, oops, sorry. AB 52 tribal notification. Notification of the project was sent to 11 local tribes on January 9th, 2023. Tribal consultation was not requested for this project. Points of interest include access. The project property is accessed off of Ogulyn Canyon Road and a private gravel and native soil surfaced access road. Metal gates control access to the private gravel and native soil surfaced access roads from the project property. An additional point of interest is that this project is considering, uh, or proposing removal of 42 trees. With that, there is grading. The purpose for this is because the anticipated site for the, um, processing facility was actually originally proposed within the area that has an overlay for scenic combining district. So it had to be removed from that area. So with that, there was an oak tree mitigation plan put into place. Removal of 42 mature blue oak trees is proposed with a three-to-one replant ratio. This would implement a total of 126 blue oak saplings to be planted. A 15-acre no-development zone is to be established to mitigate for the three-acre disturbed area. Saplings are to be cared for and protected for seven years. And the applicant also proposes to include a section dedicated to this oak habitat conservation and mitigation plan and report their survival metrics within their annual performance report for the project. Cumulative impacts. Within one mile of this proposed project are one pending and one approved project. Within three miles of this proposed project are five pending and four approved projects. Recommendations. Environmental recommendations include adopt mitigate naked, adopt mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS 22-09 for use permit UP 22-07 with findings found in the staff report. Major use permit recommendations. Approve use permit UP 22-07 with the proposed conditions of approval and the findings found within the staff report. That concludes my presentation and I'm open for questions and comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Field.
Um, I have a quick question. I was reading the agency comments and there was a comment from Laura Hall. I don't remember who she represents.
Laura Hall is our senior planner in the planning division here at County of Lake.
Okay, thanks. That's what I thought.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant before we open it up for public comment?
I have a question.
Sure. Commissioner has?
As in an earlier, um, issue we took up today, this report states that a new PG&E electric, electrical utility service connection is needed to provide, to power lights, fans, security cameras, and equipment used in and around greenhouses and the processing facility. Again, um, what kind of amps are we talking? And how much of this can really go forward before that new connection is in fact in place?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Trey Sherrill. I'm a consultant for the Desel Ranch project. To answer that question, there'd actually be, uh, kind of two phases to the power drop. First, a 200-amp service to the two groundwater wells that are near Highway 53. And then a thousand or 1,200-amp service would need to be run, um, all the way across the, um, across Ogulyn Canyon Road, uh, to the proposed greenhouses and, um, processing facility. Anticipate the, the initial, um, power drop to the wells to occur in six months or so. But then the, the larger, um, more extensive, uh, power drop would, uh, would require more time. And we anticipate that outdoor cultivation would occur with off-site processing in the, while we're waiting for the power and the buildings to be constructed for mixed light cultivation and the processing facility.
Does that answer your question?
It's, it's adequate. Sure. Another thing that has always concerned us on the commission is the, the taking of mature oaks.
Yeah.
And the habitat that they create for various creatures. And 42 is a big number. And then that's a three-acre zone that's, that would be disturbed. That's, that's a hard bump for me to get over.
Yeah. Um, as, as Mary.
Me too.
Initially, we, you know, wanted, we wanted to avoid all tree removal. Initially, we were wanting to put the greenhouses and the processing facility, uh, closer to Highway 53. Uh, but it would, it would be in a scenic overlay zone and, um, it would be visible from Highway 53 in that location. Therefore, we, this is our kind of fallback location. Unfortunately, it does require, um, some tree removal to establish the buildings in this location. To the extent possible, we have avoided trees. This is an area that is the flattest and, um, is the flattest and the most treeless, if that's their correct verbiage. Um, there, there are, there are a ton of oak trees on this, on this property. And, and so we've, if we could pull up that, um, the image, it's one of the, um, I think it's like the second slide. Or maybe the third. Forget about the.
Okay.
The, this is a parcel, aerial image of the property. All right, there it is. So as you can see, the majority of the project location is in the treeless areas of the property. But, um, due to stay in not visible or minimize invisibility. But due to staying not visible or minimizing visibility from Highway 53 and trying to utilize the flattest areas to minimize grading, the orange blocks where the proposed processing facility, that's where the majority of the trees will be removed. If I could allude to the oak habitat mitigation plan, it's not guaranteed that all 43. It's kind of a conservative estimate. There's a substantial number of trees between the proposed mixed-site cultivation area on the left or the western proposed mixed-site cultivation area and the proposed processing facility that they may not be taken out. They're not in the footprint of the building. However, they could likely be affected via construction activities. And so we included those as trees that would be removed as a result of the project. Within the footprint, there are approximately 20 oak trees within the footprint of those buildings with another 20 or so between where those two buildings would be located.
How big of trees are we talking? Diameter-wise?
It varies. For them to be considered a mature oak tree, they're over six inches DBH. There is, interestingly, there is a heritage oak. It's not shown on this image, but you can actually see it is to the right. There is a heritage oak on this property. That one's being protected, and that one has over 36 inches DBH. But...
That one?
Yes, the one on the left there. That's the top left is the heritage oak. And the project will not affect that one at all. Of the trees to be removed, they vary in size from six inches DBH to even as high as 26 inches DBH, with most of them falling in the 12- to 18-inch range. And generally, they are in good to fair condition, these trees. So when it goes to the replanting area, the three-acre replanting area, the wildfire destroyed. So this is all on the western side of a ridgeline. All the trees on the eastern side of the ridgeline were destroyed in the wildfire, and they're not coming back at all. It's all just chapparal habitat. And so the intent is to do the planting of the trees for mitigation in the area where blue oak trees had existed prior to the wildfire and are not regenerating naturally at this point in time.
Just to finish my thought, I think the mitigation report is a good report. But I would note that the new plantings, that'll be a generation before they're adequate for habitat again.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
A question arose when I was looking at this. I think it was the biology report that stated that most of the mature oaks are on the west end of the property, but the east end, they were damaged by fire. So I assume the reason that you want to plant on the west end is because of slope issues on the east end? I'm not familiar with the property. I haven't walked it, so...
We're planting on the eastern slope.
I mean planting cannabis.
Oh, oh, sorry. No, this is the area where it's just non-native grasses. For the majority of this site, it's non-native grasses. And so it would have, as opposed to the chapparal, although it's crowding out and preventing the oaks from regenerating, it is, you know, a higher-value habitat for wildlife. Whereas the open grasslands are, for lack of a better word, are lesser value than the chapparal habitat. Additionally, the proposed, the treeless area of the property historically was a vineyard millennia or decades ago, prior to the 1970s.
I have two questions for you, Mr. Sherrill, and then one for staff. So I'm looking at the cultural resource section. Is Natural Investigations Company, is there anybody here to represent them? Or you're comfortable speaking to maybe the question I have? Let me ask the question first, and then maybe I'll defer to county council to see if he can answer this. I assume he can since it's listed in the initial study. So there's a mention of a new cultural site was identified, historical rock wall segment. Do you know the time period of that historic site? Because what I'm thinking of here is historically, prior to 1870s Allotment Act, tribal people were using rock walls to define their property lines, which was a normal practice here in Lake County. So I'm not sure if it dates back that far. I'm just trying to better understand what that is. Does it meet the threshold to be a state historical resource, a county resource? And the second part of the question is in the same on page 30. I believe it's page 30. At page 30, it goes on to talk about the two cultural resource sites that were previously recorded. Says the site was revisited a decade later, but by the time only four sea inflexes appeared to remain at the location. It was noted that disturbances related to cattle grazing and access roads construction have impacted the site significantly. And so those sites are being impacted by the roads. Is that still the current issue?
Is that the issue currently?
Well, yeah. Is that still the same, is that road still being used?
Yes. These are roads that were established decades ago. And as it noted, the one site, well, both of the prehistoric sites were disturbed from previous road construction and cattle grazing on this property in the 1970s and 80s, from my understanding. I am not speaking on behalf of Natural Investigations. All I have is communication with them in the report. But that's from my understanding of the report, that yes, there were two sites on this property that were prehistoric, and then there's one historic site being the rock wall. And there once, like I said, there was a vineyard on this property and a cellar that was, and a residence associated with that rock wall, is my understanding based on the report. I can't say conclusively that that's the case.
Okay, thank you. And then for staff, you know, under that same last blurb I read, it says no cultural constituents of the site were observed during this field survey undertaken as part of this assessment.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
What document are you reading from?
I'm reading the initial study.
Okay.
This is all information in the initial study that was given to us.
Okay.
So this is Section Five, Cultural Resource Section. Page 30, it's about, it's the second paragraph.
I may be able to assist. In the cultural resources report, I just want to read one of the findings. It says that none of the three cultural resources documented appears to meet the eligibility criteria based on them being completely destroyed or partially destroyed. So it says, oops, sorry, go ahead.
And so what I want to understand is what does no cultural constituents mean? And how I'm taking it is that it's been disturbed, and there's nothing remaining of it. There's no remnants of it at all. And so it's just, to me, I don't know if this is a, I'm guessing it's a site that's been impacted over time, not so much a site that's been looted or is actively being looted. And so that's what I'm trying to understand what no cultural constituents means.
May I, just going from the cultural resources assessment, there are two things. One of the sites, the lithic scatter, it says it is also noted that location information provided in the original record may be inaccurate. They were not able to locate that site during the 2020 site visit. And then the other one, the things such as, the things that were documented in the second prehistoric site, the multi-component site is how it's referred to, says that, you know, things such as basalt mortar were documented on the site. Domestic refuse. I'm just saying that those things that were documented previously were not observed in the 2020 site visit. They did not find those.
Counsel.
Just as a general note, the county as lead agency is obligated to keep tribal cultural resources information confidential. And if it is shared with your commission, any of it in any form, it automatically becomes a public record. So I understand the frustration that if you can't, that it's difficult to make an analysis if you can't have really detailed information. But the alternative is that this information becomes public, and it becomes even more difficult, if not impossible, to protect the resource. So any information, including but not limited to, location, description, use of tribal cultural resources, anything that would identify it or its location, that is confidential. And the county should keep it and must keep it confidential. And that means that your commission cannot have the cultural resource reports, and we can't read parts of them into the record because we don't want to inadvertently waive that confidentiality and then make the resource available to the public that way. We can give general information, provided it doesn't lead back to the protected information so you can't reverse engineer it. And that makes staff's assessment particularly difficult. And it also becomes more difficult because there are a lot of gray areas and things that are older, and you have differing views as to their analysis. Historical resources are not protected the same way as cultural resources for, as tribal cultural resources. So for example, if you do have remains of a foundation from a structure that may be hundreds of years old, but the archaeologists can't tell the difference between whether or not if it was built by settlers or built by older communities, we might err on the side of caution and not discuss it during meetings or mention it as part of the assessment, simply because we don't want to make that information public. We can assist in providing information as to whether or not there were things that were identified under the standards through SEQA. I will say, though, that when SEQA starts this assessment, when the SEQA assessment starts, it begins with the property as it is in that moment. So the assessment is not whether or not the, any resource has been disturbed a lot. The issue that should be assessed, and I think that you're being asked to determine, is whether or not, based on the condition that the property is in right now, any resource, including cultural resources, the condition in which it is in right now, would the project impact it? And how do we preserve it from being impacted, either prevent impact in its entirety or to minimize it to less than significant from this project? And I think that's what you're being asked to do here, is determine whether or not this particular project in approving it as proposed would have an impact on the resources as they exist now, not whether or not those resources have been disturbed enough to not be significant, if that makes sense. There may be standards by which SEQA determines whether a resource is significant. But your commission is only required to apply those standards when making a SEQA analysis. You can also, under the rules that the county has adopted, the various rules, make a determination of your own as to whether or not you think that further impacts should be addressed or minimized, or impact should be minimized further. You are not bound necessarily by that, or you don't have to stop at the SEQA assessment if you're in your determination that this thing is significant, whatever the resource is, that you can ask for further mitigations or clarifications, or we just do have that limitation, that one limitation on cultural resources.
So just real quick, am I out of bounds asking questions?
No, I understand.
In the initial study?
No, I understand, no. The initial study is public. It's been made public. If, when you receive information in preparation for a meeting and you notice something that you think might, should not be there, do let staff know. My understanding is that the wall identified was part of, was determined to be part of sort of construction that was not related to the historical peoples on-site. So that was probably why it was included. But that's why I use that as an example, that if we do have a scenario where it's unclear, we would probably err on the side of caution and not mention it. But if it's in the initial study, certainly it's fair game. If it's in the paperwork you provided, it should be fair game. You should not then be provided a cultural resource reports. And if you do, if you do notice that there are, during the meeting, that there are third parties who do have a copy or start reading it, we would prefer that they not. Although they do, a third party can have access, that's not the county releasing it. But we would prefer that we not air it during a meeting. If that clears anything up.
Okay, no, I wasn't trying to ask.
No, no, no.
Stick on it.
No, 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 no. I understand.
I was just trying to understand what was there, and then...
No, no, you were perfectly in the right, Commissioner. If it's in the initial study, you should be able to assume that it's shareable because that is a public document. It's released through the state. It's published. So absolutely. And you can certainly ask related to efforts, questions related to efforts to mitigate impacts to resources. The only thing we want to avoid is questions that relate to the resource, its use, where it might be located, what it is, its importance to any particular tribe. We want to avoid questions like that because we don't want to air, we don't want to make that public.
Very much appreciated. And so I'm assuming the language is taken from that report with the no cultural constituents. That's not something you guys wrote. So I was just trying to understand what did that mean and how I was looking at it. So... And then, and then just the other note I wanted to make is, you know, in this section with tribal cultural resources, again, it's copying Section Five, but without the input of the tribe, there's nothing you can really add to tribal cultural resources in that area. So just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I think I was the one out of bounds by referring to the cultural resource evaluation. If I may summarize, just based on the information that's in the mitig, or the draft initial study, is there, basically, there are two sites that were identified in the 1970s and 80s. One of the sites was no longer there, and when they went back in the 1980s, there was no evidence of the second site in the most recent visit. And then a third site, a historic site, was identified. But it was determined, so the two I was referring to were prehistoric sites. There is a historic site that was identified during the most recent cultural resource evaluation, and it was determined not to be eligible for the California Register of Historic Resources.
Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Field.
Okay, so moving on to another topic or back to the oak trees. I have a very hard time approving a project that would remove this number of oak trees. So my question is, have you thought about, or would you think about, reducing the size of the project in order to preserve those oak trees?
I would have to discuss that with the applicant.
Okay, I would propose for this reason alone, I mean, I could go into the water issues that I have, which are also very serious. I would propose that we table this for that reason. Continue, I'm sorry, continue it. Discussion?
What's regarding the trees as well, but also the, I guess, another question that I kind of go off of the same tree removal would be, what aspect of the project will require most of the 70,000 yards of grading? What is the main, I'm sure it might be throughout the entire project, but what's the main one that will remove all those cubic yards of dirt?
It's the terraces for the greenhouses, trying to avoid tree removal as much as possible, therefore, but also trying to minimize the volume of fill that needs to be moved and avoid being visible from Highway 53. This is kind of where we were left with as the most, as in our opinion, the best, the best location for those greenhouses. We're kind of juggling a lot of different factors. They were trying to stay away from Highway 53. So, you know, I think everybody's familiar with the cannabis farm that's highly visible from Highway 53.
Disgusting.
And so therefore, we wanted to situate as much as possible on the opposite side of a low ridge, so it would be a visual obstruction, trying to avoid trees as much as possible. It put us on, instead of being able to carve a flat pad on a more flatter area of the property, it pushed us into this area where we would have to terrace. And the vast majority, I think 65,000 cubic yards of the 70,000 cubic yards come from the greenhouse pads.
So taking that into consideration, from the previous question from Commissioner Field, would reducing, if that was the case, would reducing the cultivation area and that greenhouse area was fit in there, would that still be visible from the highway? and that greenhouse area was fit in there, would that still be visible from the highway?
Like if he could fit it in that footprint?
Fit it in which footprint?
In the footprint of the the outdoor.
Oh.
Cultivation site, I believe.
Yeah.
Has a scenic study been done? Like, if you're driving by, would you be able to see that cultivation site from the road?
I actually looked this morning because I I prepared the visibility analysis. And during the summer when I was there, you know, because the trees have, there's lots of oak trees along Highway 53 in this area between the project site and the highway. And during the summer, you know, there's no way you would see the the project site. Actually, looked this morning as on my way here, and it would be partially visible only for a brief second, because there's still a significant amount of tree in the way. It's just the trees don't have their leaves at this point in time. And so therefore, the outdoor cultivation area, I believe, would never be visible because, you know, well, when outdoor cultivation is occurring, it would be occurring during the warmer months when the trees would have their leaves. And then, but the the structures would could possibly be visible during this time of year.
If you're like looking for them?
Yeah, you would have, I mean, you'd have to, yeah, it's not, it's not in your face.
Right.
I know where the site's going to be.
Sure.
And I know which road cut or which, I know where to look for it.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Hess, anything?
I understand exactly your comments about continuing. And we care about those trees. But would the purpose of the continuance be for the applicant to revise in in toto the plan or come up with a couple of alternatives to consider?
Yes, I was hoping, he was unable to answer the question, and I understand that. I'm kind of on the spot. But I think we're close. I think that possibly with reduction in size, I might find that I could pass it. I could approve it. But as is, I cannot.
Is there additional mitigation measures we could consider that would that would make you more comfortable with this? My concern is reworking the project would, you know, we submit this application in 2021, you know, like it may be another six months before we could be back here.
Possibly maybe increasing the or discussing the tree replacement plan or?
Well, I have another concern.
It's just the placement of it in general?
No, I I cannot accept the removal. I don't feel that, well, first of all, the tree replacement plan is not something as as Commissioner has pointed out, we're going to see in our generation.
Yeah.
And also, the water is grossly understated. So, and I'll just state this briefly because I have to leave. But if you look at the water consumption on page nine of the hydro report, I use the industry standard of six gallons per plant for an outdoor grow. And you've projected the equivalent of five months of outdoor for 3.8 acres. It is spacing of 5.5 by 5 feet, which is kind of what I do, 25 square feet per plant. That amount of water would be just for that outdoor grow. And it doesn't include the oak tree mitigation, the human employee or indoor grow consumption at all. So that's not looking realistic to me.
If I made the, so for the the oak tree replacement, there are actually four wells on this property, two of them that can produce over 70 gallons a minute or over 68, to be exact, and two that produce three to five gallons a minute. The two three to five gallon a minute wells would be used to provide water to the for the oak trees, while the the higher producing wells would be for the cannabis farm.
Okay, that that's great. But what you're saying in the with the hydrology report, it's based on a smaller number. So it's it's state, it's not stating that. So maybe it's just revision of your hydrology report that's needed here.
A smaller number of?
I can look it up here. I think it said it would need 1,500 gallons per day, which is not realistic. Page nine.
Water use was on page five?
Yeah, maybe.
Where it's 28.45 acre feet per year, over 9 million gallons per year is anticipated for mixed site cultivation, outdoor cultivation, full and part time employees.
It's confusing a little bit because the page, the pages are different.
And then the the average water use is estimated to be 25,411 gallons per day?
Okay, that's not the, those aren't the numbers that I read.
And and the maximum was 65,256. I'm going to try to find, you said page nine?
Yeah, I'm not seeing it here. Yeah, it says on page four, daily 1,500 GPD, I assume that's gallons per day. 1.05 gallons per minute? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong hydrology report. Yeah, let me, let me go back and review this.
Yeah, so going back to my question, while Commissioner Fields finds the report, if most of the grading, 65,000 cubic yards grading were strictly for the greenhouse pads, wouldn't the applicant also save a lot of time and we can save the trees at the same time if that was just moved to the cultivation site that is currently planned for? Is that something more economically friendly?
Well, it's also a soils thing. The area that the area where the greenhouses are proposed, it's flatter than than other aspects of the property, and it's generally treeless compared to, you know, the property overall. It's also a rockier soil that's not suitable for for like, it would take a great deal of mending to grow in, while the area proposed for outdoor cultivation is a better soil. It's where the vineyard was at one point. And and therefore, it trying to protect those soils for for farming practices.
And the plants are going in the ground?
Yes.
So how much of the grading would take place in the in the cultivation area?
No grading in the cultivation area, there would be tilling, just skin, things of that.
Just following the the same.
The contour, planting on contour, yeah.
And I think just the numbers of how much soil has to be moved for those greenhouse pads seems.
It is a lot.
So it would, the process to get a, that would be a major grading permit?
Yes, yeah.
It seems to me there's a couple of paths forward. One is continuing today. Two is, I understand Commissioner Field has to leave. But there could be a motion offered, and it might pass. I can't read what's in my colleagues' heads. But if there's, if that's a risk you don't want to take, then there, the other path is a continuance today.
I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity just to, so he can introduce himself.
Good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Simon Wetzel. I have been working in Lake County since I was 15 years old. My wife and I bought this property back in 2011. We've enjoyed recreational use of that property for many years. We started this process over three years ago. And as as I'm sure you're all aware, at that time, economic conditions were were very different than they are today for cannabis cultivation. It's been a long road to get here today and an expensive road. I work at the Brassfield Winery. I have been there for the last over 20 years. You know, despite the fact that, yeah, it's a relatively large site, you know, economically, we're not people that, you know, can afford a lot of extra reports and delays and things like that. So anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your consideration of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
If there were only three of us sitting up here, we would have to vote unanimously in favor of this application. Otherwise, it would be denied automatically, and there's obviously an opportunity for appeal. That's that's one option. The other option would be, of course, continuing. And then I think you would deserve some clarity in terms of exactly what you would be using that continuation time for, in terms of bringing something back to the commission that, you know, could then be considered again. And I can't advise you either way about which path is smarter to take.
But those, that's pretty much what's on the table at this point.
Again, just to address the the oak tree, so the oak tree situation, as I said, my wife and I bought this property in 2011. In 2012, the wildfire burned approximately half of the property, burned it badly. And we have, I, we can certainly look it up, and I'm sure Trey can provide a more accurate estimate, but I would say there were probably at least 100 acres of torched oak shabral. Those oaks are not coming back. They're falling over as we speak because they've been standing there dead for 12, 13 years. I think that our mitigation plan is an opportunity to replant that area that otherwise would not get replanted. So that's, we just hope that the commission would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Pickle. I believe public comment is still open. If anyone wants to speak on this item, do we have anything in the in the Zoom room, Ruby? Okay, so it's back to the commission.
Man, Chair, I'm I'm inclined to lean towards continuing. I appreciate Mr. Wetzel's comments about time, expense, et cetera. And I was, I would wonder if there's any way to reduce the number of oaks that could be taken. And I understand the, you ran up against the issue of a scenic combining zone. But I think Commissioner Field would agree if she were still here that perhaps somehow coming back with a different treatment of the mature blue oaks and maybe still taking some of them, of course. We don't, we have never denied an application just because there's still two trees that we would like taken out, you know, to get that granular. But I would be prepared to make a motion to continue. I would be prepared to make a motion to proceed. But I'd still like to see a different treatment of the trees.
And I think that we, just kind of taking a feel for the consensus of the commission, I would feel in agreement to continue this item as well. My areas of concern are definitely the trees. And just to kind of maybe rearrange some things to, you know, and I know that Commissioner Chavez was concerned about the amount of grading. Instead of giving this a stamp and saying no, I I feel like the continuance is the way to go about revisiting our areas of concern. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just, I would just like to add, you know, I think, again, the balance is important for myself. And and, you know, when I think about oak woodland's potential loss, I'm looking at, you know, the, in the report, the trees itself. And and in my mind, and this is how how I look at this and and connect it back to tribal cultural resources, is is anybody from the tribal community actively harvesting acorns? Are there, and the biological resources, they're endangered or threatened species in those trees, nesting, birds? And so I didn't see any of that. And so, you know, the number does sound a lot, but when I look at it and I analyze it, I don't see that impact. And so, again, why I'm saying that is, for one, the the food source for the tribal community, if they if they were accessing that parcel, I don't know of anybody that's doing that, that would be, in my mind, a reason to say no, protect the trees. But if that's not being done, the trees aren't mature, they're not producing acorns, then they're not in that place to really, in that sense, for me, to be protected, although I understand the concern is a lot of number of trees. But again, I I think I would be comfortable moving forward with the vote. But again, I don't feel like that's where we're at, you know? So I just wanted to say that. That's that's kind of where my position is. And sure, if you have more comments, I'm not sure if anybody else has any comments. I'd definitely like to gather some more information.
I definitely appreciate you, your your site and your, the way that you kind of put it with the the age of the trees and the in the necessity and the use of the trees. I do appreciate that. It kind of gave me a different light bulb. Commissioner Hess?
I've been on the, walking a very fine line in my head in the course of this conversation, and I know it's excruciating for you guys. I, given my colleague's comments, Commissioner Brown, I I would support a motion today. And if anybody's doing the math, that makes two.
Yeah, I would support this project as well. Obviously, the the biggest concern, and if it was possible or something viable to the project, I mean, we have eight acres of outdoor and then the the high, the most highly impacted area, which would be for the greenhouse pads, obviously, like, if if it has already been analyzed and and the work has been already planned for this, my only question is, would it ever be an option to potentially minimize that at all? Is it just a definite no or 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 just, or it could be possible? Does that make the project still work?
As we started out today talking about the PGV power drop, the the first items of development, for lack of a better word, for for this project would be outdoor cultivation and establishment of the proposed processing facility. I I don't know the number off the top of my head. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at the plans. But like I said, I think like 65,000 cubic yards were involved with the greenhouses, where only about 5,000 cubic yards of earth movement was involved with the processing facility. So if the project fails, for for example, it's only going to be with the outdoor cultivation area and the disturbance for the processing facility, the greenhouses are not going to, are not a viable addition development of those, not a viable for at least, not this year for certain, probably not next year either. And so the grading and the tree removal associated with the greenhouses would not would not occur until the project was a success as a whole, you know, not just an establishment, but also an operation.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that you said that because I, that's kind of what I was, you know, is it all going to be done at once? So the fact that that's, that if it does seem like a, like a good investment, you know, counting on the success of of the farm with the outdoor, then later on, you can decide if that is, you know, because we're getting pitched this entire project. So it just seems like, okay, like, we're going to cut all these trees down, we're going to put these pads, and then we have the.
Grading going on and everything.
And everything going on. So it just seems like a lot of parts going on. So but that makes me a lot more comfortable knowing that, you know, if it does become successful, because, I mean, we've seen farms that have just reduced their size of of cultivation due to the, you know, the price, due to the water availability, due to a bunch of factors, you know, economic. So, yeah, I feel more comfortable with that option as it being, you know, starting on one point and seeing how it goes, so.
And to that effect, I don't believe that all acres are going to be planted this year. Mr. Mr. Wetzel is is in communication with a established company in the cannabis industry that has processing elsewhere. And so I'm not even sure that that the processing building would be established this year. Right now, the the greatest desire is just to get the outdoor planted and up and running this year. As for the greenhouses, it's kind of a backup plan. Not knowing the future of this industry, it may become where that's the only thing that's viable. And so therefore, there's a strong desire to at least have. that's viable. And so therefore, there's a strong desire to at least have that option available in the future. If desire for outdoor cannabis flower material is less, or if that's the only way for this project to succeed, we'd like to have that option available. That being said, you know, if the outdoor cultivation is great, I, you know, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that have to be invested into that, into the greenhouse. And so, if the outdoor cultivation is sustainable, there may not be the desire to go in that direction for such a large investment.
Yeah. I do appreciate your clarifying that for us. And I feel a lot more comfortable with things, just knowing that it's kind of going to go in phases. And you'd rather throw out a big net, right, and make sure that you're covering all your bases, even if you're only going to use a little bit. So, I do appreciate that, that aspect of it. And I appreciate all my colleagues' input and direction. And I feel like we're all kind of on the same page.
One more comment, and it's brief. I am prepared to proceed. And I know that there are people here who have been very, very patient all morning and are eager to speak as well. But we, this is a process we undergo, and it's a public process. We don't make up our minds before we get here. And we've heard from everybody who wishes to weigh in. And I hope that's instructive. And there's a reason for this, other than just making you wait a little bit longer before we get to your items. So, thank you for that. And I'm prepared to proceed.
Question. I guess, to Mr. Sher and Mr. Wetzel, what is you guys' commitment to the oak tree replacement plan? That's, I see it, I've looked at it, and that's a firm commitment that this is what you want to do moving forward. And my concern again is, you know, we do this, and down the road, we go, oh, no, the trees aren't taken, so we're going to just kind of get rid of it, you know. So, that's, again, a part of my thinking is to balance that loss of trees, that there needs to be a commitment to the oak tree replacement plan. And that's what I'm hoping you guys are committed to.
Go for it.
Motion?
Yep.
I move that the planning commission find that potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration, IS 22-09, submitted by Dizell Ranch, Simon Wetzel, for the property located at 500, 700, 770 California State Highway 53 and 550, 660 Junction Plaza, Clear Lake. And further described in this motion will not have a significant effect on the environment, and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 22-09 with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 25, 2024.
We have a motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I move further that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP 22-07, applied for by Dizell Ranch, Simon Wetzel, for the property located at 500, 700, 770 California State Highway 53 and 550, 660 Junction Plaza, Clear Lake, and further described in this motion, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and that the planning, and that the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated January 25, 2024.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. Thank you for your patience on that item. Thank you, Mary. All right. We are looking at a time of 12:00. Am I, we're able to move forward without a break, correct?
We have till 12:30.
Okay. We're going for it. All right. Okay.
Oh, and just for the audience, we have until 12:30 before labor law requires that our staff be given a lunch break.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item is a public hearing for consideration of major use permit, UP 22-24, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 22-29, for a private compound and special event venue. Applicant Rancho Nuevo, located at 5680 Blue Lakes Road, Upper Lake, APN 003-007-03. And I, staff?
Yes, thank you. Michelle Iris, Principal Planner. As noted in the memorandum prepared for this item, staff is requesting a continuance based on some errors and inconsistencies found within the final review phase. So, at this date, there's no staff report or analysis, and staff is requesting a continuance to a date and time uncertain. And as I understand, you have the option to open the public comment period if you wish.
Thank you. Well, with everybody taking the time to spend your morning with us, I would love to open up public comment and get some feedback from everybody, even though we won't be able to have a staff report today or make a decision. You have almost a full board minus Commissioner Fields, that we really do value your opinion and your input. So, anybody wishing to give your, your input on this item, you're welcome to approach the podium, and you'll have three minutes to talk. And if nobody wishes to speak, then you guys, we will just kind of close it, and we will just revisit this. But if everybody's here wishes to speak, we'd love to hear what you have to say. You're welcome to approach and just to give us your first and last name and three minutes.
Hi, my name is Donald Mua. I live on Laurel Del Road, which is actually attached to Blue Lakes Road, kind of fills in that gap between Blue Lakes Road and Scotts Valley. It is already the DUI highway. It's a one-lane road. We've had multiple situations where I've almost been hit, or my children have almost been hit by excessive drivers. I live on a straightaway where people reach speeds of 40-plus miles an hour. One of the major concerns is people leaving an event where alcohol is concerned, or served, will be passing by my home. I have small children. That's one of the concerns I have. The other concern I have is the use of the beach. They've put in for the use of the beach that is across from the lodge. They found a clause somewhere in an old deed that says that the property has use. Their intended use is for commercial processes, which will actually destroy the use of the beach for the people, the 50 homes that are already associated with it. And the other thing that's a concern is, are they, did they make any consideration for liabilities for the people that actually own the property? Because this property is not an owner of the property, it is a user of the property. They are not actual owners of the property. It's just they have use of it. The other concern is, I'm a retired firefighter. I spent 30 years in fire service. And one of my major concerns is fire evacuation routes. Those roads, if you have an event with that many people, it takes one person to drive off the road to kill a bunch. You block the road, it will ruin the evacuation. We saw that in Paradise a few years ago, where just a couple vehicle accidents in a panic situation caused backups. And with the increased amount of people in an area that is highly sensitive to fire, the chances are much higher. From driving by, I've noticed that there's been some grading done, there's been some creeks diverted. Historically, I grew up in that area. I've pretty much fished every creek, hiked every hill in that area. There historically used to be hitches that used to run the creek at the Narrows and Latrionon in the spring. They used to come up through Scotts Creek into lower Blue Lakes, into upper Blue Lakes, and up into the creeks. The runs have been reduced over the years due to debris in Scotts Creek. But they, historically, when I was a kid, we used to go find hitch up in those hills all the time. I don't, did not see any mention of that in the sequo. Just so you know. And I also didn't, did see the drainage and grading stuff done on the sequo, because this is all basically untouched oak woodlands. And it's a south slope, oak woodlands, and nobody's really been there for my lifetime, which is about 50 years. So, those are just some of my main concerns. And like I said, one of the other ones, the property owners of the beach itself are really worried about the liability. And the people in the neighborhood are worried about the traffic.
Thank you. Good morning. Afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Angie Carter. My husband and I own the Narrows Resort out on Blue Lakes. We are located at 5690 Blue Lakes Road, just directly across from 50, the Rancho Nova project. So, myself, along with the other resort owners out there on Blue Lakes, as well as many of the homeowners, the homeowners association that is out there, many of our guests that visit our resorts out there have many concerns regarding this project. We have, many of them have sent in letters that I'm sure that you've received over the last couple of days. If you haven't received them yet, you will be receiving them soon. I have some packets that I'll leave here with you. I think I have 10 is what I was instructed to bring, that go over many details as to many of our concerns, photos, letters, things like that. Yeah, if you can make sure that the commissioners each get one of the envelopes, and then you can divvy up the rest of them however you'd like. Wow. Thanks. But some of our concerns that I just wanted to hit on real quickly, the unpermitted grading that's gone on over the last couple of years is a big concern of ours throughout the entire property that's done, the tree removal that's been done, and it continues to go on as of most recently, just up until this last October. You'll find pictures in there of them up on the hillside, doing a road up on the hillside there. In their original packets, that's where they were going to be doing their tent sites at. But until they were told they can't continue the grading up there, then they said that was just a road that they were doing up to their water tank that they have up there. We have concerns about the amount of traffic, as you just heard, and I'm sure that you're going to hear more about that. It is a small, narrow road. If you've never traveled Blue Lakes Road, I invite you to come and take a look and see what it is. It is a very small, one-lane road. Recently, Upper Lake Post Office has decided that it is too dangerous for them to come down and deliver our mail, so we now have to drive to town to get our mail. So, it is not a good road to drive on. Recently, they had an event out there at Rancho Nova in September, an unpermitted event. They had over 275 people at this event. So, you can imagine what it's going to be like having this much traffic out there. My husband and I bought the Narrows five years ago, and we've worked very hard to condense our amount of traffic that we have, condense our population. We don't do day use. Maximum capacity at any, even our most populated weekends, is 220 people. That's it. And everyone coming has to stay the night. We make our traffic go one way. We're very, very careful about the traffic. It is a huge concern of ours. They've, their intent is to have amplified live music. They did this at this last event. It was like having a concert in our resort. That's not something that our people come to our resort to have. They did a noise study. This was not a noise study on live music. This was a noise study on just a radio. Their noise, it's in the packet that I provided. Then there's the huge amount of leach lines that they have already put in place. I don't know, we don't even have 500 feet of leach lines. I don't know why someone needs 500 feet of leach lines. Also, there is the cannabis grow that was on the top of the property. There's a letter in there from the county to them, asking them about their cannabis grow. That was not permitted, that was raided. We watched the helicopters come in and take it out, 2019, 2020, 2021. We have questions about all of these things. Blue Lakes, it's a small, tight-knit community. We pride ourselves on being peaceful, tranquil. We work together as a community to provide a safe place for people to come, tourists to come. We're a tourist community. We want to keep it that way. I'm sure most of you have seen this magazine. Lake County Chamber of Commerce had put it out. Inside there, you're going to find an article about Blue Lakes. The last line in it says, "Blue Lakes promises and delivers peace and tranquility." 275 people, live amplified music blaring throughout the lake is not peace and tranquility. We work hard to make this a nice place. I encourage people to earn a living, to do the best that they can. But when it infringes on other people's rights, that's not okay. So, anyway, if you have questions about the packets I delivered, my card is on there, feel free. I'd be more than happy to come and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Tamara Ogram, and Pine Acres Resort on the Upper Blue Lake. And I do have some things to address their issues. And I'm sure there's a lot, and it takes more than three minutes to cover everything. But that long, narrow road that Mrs. Carter was just talking about is actually the Old Stagecoach Road. And that was before Highway 20 was even put in. And so, that road accessed all the way to San Francisco. That road is in very bad condition. Mom and dad bought the Narrows before Angie and sold it to the Serenys. And anyways, that road hasn't even been maintenance in over 50 years. Back behind the actual Latrionon, it's a beautiful pavement that's there, but that's because the mountain washed out. And so, they had to rebuild the hill up, and then they paved the road there. Noise is a major concern, especially when I can hear it at the other end of the lake. So, our lake is just a little under two miles long, to where the road is just a little over two miles long. And the noise is bad. I had horns, peep, the music, everything blowing right through the resort, to where when I opened up my office the next morning, I had complaints on the phone and people coming in. It's all hours of the night, and it's well past 10. It was well past midnight, okay? So, addressing another concern is Highway 20 when they have an accident on that road. I will tell you that that Old Stagecoach Road, it is crazy. 5342, we had a three-and-a-half-story house back there. And when the fire broke out, not just the fires in the last three years, but a fire about six years ago, the airplane was throwing retardant down, which broke the fire actually. And it was going on the upper ridge, right behind Blue Lakes Road. And we were given 20 minutes, 20 minutes at the most, to get as much as we could that we needed out of our home. That back road was crazy. And it was because of Highway 20 and all of the lookers. That's what, they just wanted to see what was going on. That's scary. You've got two resorts right back there. We're talking maybe now three, talking 275 people. That's probably, if you put three people per car, that's probably between 83 to 100 vehicles more that will be on that back road in the middle of a disaster, okay? Nature walks, our families, our kids, I'm now bringing my grandkids back there. Nature walks are really beautiful back there with all the ferns, the flowers, the trees, the beauty of the lake, everything. The serenity is just absolutely gorgeous back there. The vehicles that are speeding back, that will be speeding back there, that will be that many more vehicles that will be back there, that is not safe for us, for our children, or nor for our animals. Fires, that one really scares me, fires. Not only have we had it on the back side, we've had it on the other side. And I watched that fire. It was devastating. I actually helped out with the fire department, everybody, and they had a place to hang their maps and put 13 trucks in the resort. And as 13 were pulling out, 13 more would pull back in, and these boys were tired. But I'm glad we were there to be able to support them in any way. The music, it does carry through the lake. It's like a canyon. So, when, it's kind of like me talking on this, and then all of a sudden, I'm on a blowhorn, okay? That's really crazy. So, it's kind of disrespectful to any of our guests, especially when everybody says, "Tamara, why doesn't everybody comply?" You know, music and, or noise time is quiet time at what time? I believe that's 10 o'clock, okay? So, I'm concerned about drunk drivers on that back road. The road is washing away. In some areas, the road's not even 12-foot wide. And we've had big, huge oak trees that have fallen down, that have taken within four feet into the Old Stagecoach Road down the hill. So, that even narrows it even more. We're not even looking at 12 feet anymore. We're looking at places that are more narrow. The road has no lights back there. It's pitch black, pitch black. And we're going to have people at all hours of the morning. They're blowing horns at 1:00 a.m., and they're going to be coming down. That's really eerie. There's homes that are all down there in that residential area, that butt right up against the water's edge right there. EVs, emergency vehicles, wow. Okay, so I've met with the Governor Jerry Brown, and I also met with the- Okay, so I've met with the Governor Jerry Brown, and I also met with the Chief of the North Shore Fire Department, and that was to talk about parking, okay? You cannot park on Blue, on the Old Stagecoach Road. You cannot park on there. There's basically two, maybe three turnarounds. One was my driveway, and the only one, that had a double-car garage, okay? It actually had a driveway. And then where the mountain blew out from water, where trees had come down, we kind of call it the waterfall now, and that's narrow right there. And then you have the Narrows. Well, the Narrows has gates. I know that the Chief of the Department, you know, he would have to reverse and go forward. This is what they don't want to do. He wants to be able to turn around and to make a complete U-turn without being stopped. That's an issue when that road is only 12 to 15 feet max wide, okay? So anyways, I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak. It is major concerns. I wish, you know, and I know that there's more people, I do know there's more letters that are even going to be coming in to the concerns of this. It's just not a narrow road. And if you've been back there, it is the Old Stagecoach Road, which is very, very tiny. And having 200 to 275 to 300 more people that are going to be driving up and down, it's not going to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Absolutely.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Amy Novoa. So I want to introduce myself first. My name is Amy. My husband is Juan, and we own Rancho Novoa. And we're pretty local. We live 20 minutes from the site. Recently retired from UPS after 33 years, and this was going to be my retirement job. So we really wanted to make a beautiful place for the community, for people to come and make memories in a beautiful setting. And it's also a place where local businesses can be supported. Right now, the casino, we could use a casino, use the shuttle service there. There are rooms that they'll let us use the shuttle, so it will reduce the traffic on the road, which I would like to say has been recently paved. It is paved, and I know that these changes have been hard, you know? We welcome anyone to come check out our place, local people, they can call us. None of these people have called us or come checked it out, you know, to see what we are really, how beautiful the place is and what we have to give to the community. So what has been happening, just for a little bit of background, is that we've been called on many times. We've been called on the grading four times, and every time, we've had the permit that we needed. We've gotten all the permits. We've paid for the roads, we've paid for the schools, we've paid for the permit for here. We also do have our local resident on there, so we have already got, the septic system has already been approved through the environmental health. The water is actually commercial, it's already been approved. Our well room has been approved. Basically, any permits that we needed have been done. We also, I'm not sure if, we have actually, in fact, made the environment and our neighbors our priority. And if they notice that, we have had the archaeological study, the biological study. We've had the local tribes come visit. They were there when we did the digging for our sewer system there. We also did the certificate, so, training with them, so that if we found anything, we knew the protocol, and so that has all been done. And you know, for our neighbors, I understand about the noise. We did have the noise study done, and what basically the noise study said is that the Highway 20 was louder than our music at a certain decibels. And you know, this, it's a huge study. It was $8,000. We did this so that we don't upset our neighbors. Another thing that we, just the paved road, so they're saying the road is really in bad disrepair, and it's not, and they're doing the underlying PG&E on the other side, and it would also be paved. So it's completely, it'll be completely paved. So it's not in disrepair. On one side, it is paved. The other side, they're working on it, and then it will be paved. So that's coming up. We understand about the parking. I have pictures, but I think I'm just going to wait until we come back, and I'll do like a PowerPoint. The parking lot is huge. I think it has like 44 spaces. And if the event gets bigger than the spaces, we, there will be no parking outside whatsoever. And there would be, we would use shuttles, and the shuttle's no bigger than our truck that we use on that road. And we do, I do have a picture actually of what's, some sizes of the campers that are on that.
Let's, we're going to kind of try to keep it at the three minutes, just because there's other people, but we definitely do your PowerPoint. You know, you'll have a chance when you come back after your, after the continuance and all of that, but just.
Okay, so I'm wrapping it up. We feel that we have done everything. We've done every permit. When we walked into the planning committee, Eric was there, he's not here, he's getting ready to retire, but anyways, he was very excited about this plan. He goes, "Oh, this is something for the community. Most of the things that are coming up right now are about other issues," which is fine. And we did actually have people that got ahold of us and wanted to do the same issue on our land, because it would have been, it has, you know, it would be certified for other issues, but we thought that this kind of project would be help, more helpful to our, more, that the neighbors would be more excited about this one. And so this is why we went with this, to help, you know, to create a place where we could serve our community. And so that's what we're just asking you to, to hopefully, you know, see our side of this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and have a blessed day.
You too.
Hi, my name is Tom Engstrom. I've lived in Lakeport for 30 years. My family has camped at the Narrows Resort for more than 27 years, and in fact, we spend most of our summer weekends up there, even though we have a home here in Lakeport. We absolutely love the peaceful, quiet atmosphere up there, and it's a great place for families. And we've been having our family reunion there, which now includes our children and our 40 grandchildren and great-grandchildren come there. And as their grandpa and great-grandpa, I'm happy to take them there because it's confined, and it's safe, and it's quiet, and it's peaceful. And quiet time starts at 10:00. And if you're making noise, Angie will kindly come around and tell you, "You need to quiet down, because it's time to go to bed, or at least sit quietly around your campfire." Blue Lakes Road, yes, it's been repaved, but it is narrow. It should be a one-lane road, but it's not, and it's dangerous. And if you go up there at night, or you're leaving at night, it's extra dangerous. You don't need that traffic. Angie has a thing set up where if I'm coming in with a trailer, you don't come until after 3:00, and the people who are leaving leave at 11:00. And they go out toward Ukiah, and they come in from Ukiah. So you don't have to worry about big vehicles coming down that road. The amplified music blaring until midnight is enough to force me and other people to quit coming and take our money and go camping someplace else. We go there because it's peaceful and it's quiet. And when the time comes, I urge you to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I could probably get a couple more if anybody wants to speak. I'm showing a time of 12:25, so we have a few more minutes.
My name is Juan Novoa, one of the owners of the Rancho Novoa. I'd like to thank everybody for your time, and I can see why we had to do every study and everything we had to do to keep our neighbors happy, because obviously, the environment and everything else is very important to all of you. I do all the work. It's an owner build, and when I says owner build, I do build it myself. Everything, all the steps. And I'm sure everybody in this room can vouch that I'm there working. So I did hear a few things everybody said. Obviously, yes, we had my niece's wedding there a few months ago, and I do remember our neighbor standing out the gate with a clock at 10:00 when the music did turn off. So, and we respected everybody at that point. And as for the vehicles, yes, 40 cars is a lot, but they're vehicles. They're not commercial trucks, they're not commercial trailers that are 40 feet long coming down the road. And yes, I think it should be a one-way. That'd be great. I have no problem with that. It'd be great for fires, it'd be great for pedestrians, it'd be great for everybody. So I am open to that, and when we come to our continuation next time, when we see you guys. And as for, like, the grading that's been brought up so many times, the environmental impact of digging and all of this, the PG&E has all been installed, permitted, it's been overseeded by all of the departments that needed to be overseen by biological, archaeological, Native Americans. We've done all the studies. I mean, a lot of this isn't to public knowledge, so nobody really knows what we're doing. They just assume, and the first mistake is to assume something, I would think. So I would just like to say that, and we'll just see on the next one, and hopefully, on the next continuance, you will have the brochure that shows all the reports from all the different departments and all the different engineers that we had all these studies done by, by Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm in a, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you talk, because one minute, are you gonna talk? All right, I'll give you a little bit of time. Come on over and say your first and last name for me.
My name's Gary Pierce. I'm a homeowner at Blue Lakes, the little community there, have been for quite a few years, and I just wanted to go on record asking and hoping that this project isn't approved, basically for all the reasons that we've talked about, the danger, fire danger, the danger in the road, the noise pollution is terrible. It's just, it's a peaceful little community, and it's really a disruption to our community. So I'm really hoping that it's not approved, and I would like to go on record for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, we are going to close public comment, and I encourage you all to come back whenever this continuance. You'll get notified again, I believe, kind of the same way, and it'll be public, it'll be just kind of the same way, but hopefully, at that time, the applicant will have a full staff report, will have the, you know, everything will be out for everyone to revisit and look at at that time. So do we have to make a formal motion to continue, since, yes, we do? Okay. So yes, again, I do appreciate everyone's input, and I do encourage you to come back when we reissue the notice for this.
And thank you for your patience today.
Yeah, and everyone's patience, for sure.
These aren't the most comfortable chairs. Do we have a continuance date?
They are continuing to a date uncertain, so we do not have a date scheduled at this time, but just please rest assured that you will be notified, and it will be a public hearing again.
And Chair, I move that Item 6E be continued to a date uncertain.
Okay, motion on the floor as a continuance?
A second.
Okay, mo, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion moves to continue.
Great. One other additional detail, please. If there is anybody who's present today who wishes to be notified personally or through the direct mail for a future public hearing, please see Ruby or Michelle after this meeting is adjourned in order to get us your email address, mailing address, so that we can make sure you get added to the notification list.
Yeah, can I read my email?
Certainly.
For folks on the Zoom, because I see some hands up, it's Michelle with two L's dot irace, I-R-A-C-E at lakecountyca.gov.
Thank you for that, Michelle. All right, so that actually concludes all of our agenda items, other than maybe an office update, or, I don't know, something funny, maybe a joke.
I have a very quick department update.
Okay, we'll take your department update.
Yesterday, we had our environmental impact report scoping meeting for the general plan and local area plan updates.
Excellent.
It went great. It was very informative. And also, last Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors did approve a 15-member General Plan Advisory Committee.
G-PAC.
G-PAC, and the following memberships are, were identified for expertise in this area. We do encourage, I'll read that list in a second, but we do encourage any member of the public who wants to participate. This is, we'll have five meetings over the next three years, but it's a great way to have feedback on the various documents as they get prepared.
Excellent.
And those areas of expertise, excuse me, are Fire District, Tribal, Homeowners Association, Education, Water District, Environmental Group, Senior Support Services, Business Association, Conventional Agriculture, Cannabis Industry, and one public member-at-large seat for each supervisory district.
Okay.
The applications can be filled out online. If you go to the county website, www.lakecountyca.gov, and go into the Board of Supervisors webpage, you'll see on the bottom right-hand side in Quick Links, an advisory board application. Please note that this committee is voluntary, and there is no reimbursement for all the amazing time.
It's a contribution.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mariah.
Thank you. Does that conclude your office update?
That concludes my update.
Okay. All right, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 12:30 something. 34.